refrain from taking any action that distracts the council from its business, including shouting out or otherwise disturbing the meeting. Public comment will be taken both in person in the council chamber and also by teleconference for today's meeting. And with that, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, De Leon, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, eleven members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes of May third, twenty twenty-three.
Councilmember Hut moves. Councilmember Blumenfeld seconds. Next.
The mandatory resolutions for approval.
Hello, everyone. Councilmember Rodriguez moves.
Hi, everybody. Just in time. We just started. They're still doing.
Next.
They're still doing roll.
Let's run through the agenda, please.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Happy Friday. Happy Cinco de Mayo.
There is a request to continue on one to May twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Next.
Items one through twenty-seven are items which public hearings have been held.
And of course, happy May fourth. May the fourth be with you.
Members, those matters are now before us. Are there any of those items that any member would like to call special? Councilmember Park.
You, Council President, I'd like to call items six and ten special for remarks.
May the fourth.
Item six and ten special for remarks. Very good. Thank you. Any other items that any members would like to call special?
What's up, MW? What's up, Lindy?
Going once, going twice.
Hi, Wayne.
All right.
What's up, babe?
Madam Clerk, what items then are now available for us to vote on?
Hi, buddy.
The council may now vote on items one through five, seven through nine, and eleven through twenty-seven.
Very good. Those items are now before us, members. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Get my bomb going here, guys.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Like the mug, Gonzo? Yeah, boy.
Eleven eyes.
Star Wars. Got support for Star Wars. At least the old stuff, not the new shit.
Very good. So that will take us next to item number six. Councilmember Park.
I know it's the fifth. That's why I said Cinco de Mayo, but, you know, May the fourth was yesterday.
Thank you, Council President. The overdose crisis driven by illicit fentanyl is seen on our sidewalks, public transportation system, in our schools, in our homes, everywhere.
Every morning, Emily. Every morning.
Right here in L.A. County, there was a nearly thirteen-hundred percent increase in overdose fatalities between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty-one.
There was actually a crazy high-speed chase last night, Joseph. Everybody missed it. It was in the middle of the night here. Crazy last night. Full moon has really already kicked in. We had a three-alarm fire that was absolutely enormous. You could see it across the city at like a packing factory, like, you know, cardboard. There's that. Then there was a police chase. A guy with a gun and his other buddy jumped into a car with a couple of other buddies. One of them had a gun, pursued and, you know, pursued to happen, went from, you know, South L.A. into downtown on Twelfth and Maple. Got off the freeway at Twelfth and Maple. Two of the guys got out and ran. One of them that had the gun ran and they shot at him and shot and killed him. So he's dead. Sweet him. We don't have to pay for his ass to go and hang out in jail. And the other guys took off, so, yeah. So there's still investigations going on, officer-involved shooting, all that on Twelfth and Maple in downtown very early this morning.
Council have taken action to ensure that city personnel are prepared and trained in the application of Narcan. Ultimately responding to this crisis is going to require robust cooperation with our state and federal partners as well as public health officials. Today's action will allow us to take a closer look at our protocols for identifying these new drugs as they emerge here in Los Angeles and ensure that we're maintaining open lines of communication between first responders and our public health officials.
How are the drugs getting in, lady?
In doing this, we can identify gaps, refine our approach, and ultimately save more lives.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I ask for your eye vote.
Ultimately, you don't give a shit.
Thank you.
Ultimately, this is your dog and pony show. That's your little soapbox to stand on and shout.
Let's go ahead and open the roll.
We get it. You want to save everybody's lives. What a fucking philanthropist you are.
Thank you. On item number ten, Councilmember Park.
Thank you again, Council President.
Goddamn lifesaver.
The Olympic and Paralympic Games will just be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to bring lasting recreation and outdoor activities to our spaces. From Venice Beach to Boyle Heights and the Valley and the South Bay, these events will raise the bar by serving as a global example for what a green, sustainable, global sporting event should look like. One that is powered by clean, reliable, renewable resources and innovative infrastructure.
Fucking moron.
But let's be real, too.
Let's be real, too. We're not going to have that new renewable energy that we're talking about. That renewable energy that she's talking about is a figment of her imagination.
Transportation systems and visitor accommodations. All of this will be further complicated by climate change, which is why our work strengthening and preparing our infrastructure must begin now. Per our games agreement, the city is required to create a gas energy council by next year so that we can start to lay the groundwork for a comprehensive energy program that prioritizes close coordination between the city, the twenty-eight games, and local power providers.
The twenty-eight game. I'm already talking about the Olympics because that's what it's about, ladies and gentlemen, the dollars. They're going to clean up the homeless. They'll do all that just during the Olympics to get those motherfuckers out of here in twenty twenty-eight. Because they already know they ain't going to move them, but they know they're not going to have the homeless crisis solved by twenty twenty-eight, which is five years from now. They won't have that. In fact, it'll be tenfold, I bet, in five fucking years.
Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
She's just another idiot councilwoman.
Twelve eyes.
Thinks she's a fucking awesome individual, saving the world, doing so much for us and doing nothing but gaslighting.
With that, I'd like to recognize our Council President Protem, Councilmember Curran Price for a very special presentation.
Hanging out with this fucking, the petty pink-faced dictator. You know. And this idiot here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today we're gathered here to commemorate the extraordinary life of Miguel Contreras by declaring today and every day thereafter Miguel Contreras Day in the City of Los Angeles.
Let's get it.
That's worth an applause, don't you think?
What's up, Monaster?
I was honored to introduce the resolution submitting Miguel's long history of coalition building and organizing. He started his career organizing for the United Farm Workers before being recruited by the Hotel Employees and Restaurant Employee Union, where he became a national organizer.
You see that?
In his involvement with here, Miguel changed the policy of traditional unionism by excluding immigrant workers and lifting them up into the leadership of the movement. In nineteen ninety-four, he became the political director of the L.A. County Federation of Labor and then the executive secretary of the L.A. Fed. There he reached out to immigrant workers.
Thankfully, we've had forty-eight hours, knock on wood. I don't want to, I don't want to say it, but I'll say it. I don't want to ruin it, but forty-eight hours, no peeing outside the box. That's what I'm talking about. So hopefully, you know, it's like the doctor said, the vet, you know, as soon as the course of medication runs out of his body, because remember, two days ago when we just finished it. So now he's done with the medications, and now it has to, like, clear his body, so him to get back to his normal function and feel. And then I feel like, because they said it, it's going to cause him to lose his bladder, and that was the problem. So hopefully, we're past this. That's all we can hope. I mean, he's playing with me, he's eating, not drinking enough water, I can tell you that right now. I don't see him drinking enough water, but I've been cheating him. I put water in his wet food. I mean, make it like soup. So in order for him to eat, he's going to have to drink. I know it's not nice of me to do, but I want him to live.
And increasing wages for all workers.
I want him to live.
Here's to the legacy of a trailblazer who helped diversify the political and economic landscape of the great Los Angeles era and California politics.
Happy birthday, Allison.
We're joined today by several elected officials and labor leaders. First up, I'd like to call our fearless civil rights leader and advocate, Dolores Work.
Sorry, I didn't see it. You saw it on the chat room. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
I'm a thug?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No thug.
Thank you.
I'm just a person that has no filter, and I'll tell you how the fuck I feel to your face.
That's what I said. Thank you very much.
That I will do. No thug. Happy birthday, C. O. Z. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank the city council for taking up this resolution to honor Miguel Contreras.
Don't eat too much cake.
And it is fitting that we do this on Cinco de Mayo, because this is what Miguel actually represented. You know, he started out with the farm workers' union at a very young age, I think about nineteen years old, and immediately he took leadership.
Yeah, Drake.
Then having a big strike in the Central Valley of California, the famous Great Strike. And he was from the president area, I think Dinuba, but, and Miguel would put him in charge of the picket lines, and before we knew it, here we're looking at the television.
SWAT. I can't put him, I can't have him, doctor's orders, he can't have anything that's not per the prescription food. He cannot. No treats, no us food, no nothing, no of his old food, nothing. It's either his food that he's getting now or nothing.
Of a picket line.
And water, so.
He went on to.
They're really strict about it, and I want to just follow the orders.
And United Farm Workers, and then, as you heard, he went on to the Hotel Workers Union, and everywhere that he went, he really worked to make sure that the workers had representation.
You want me dead, huh? You want the asteroid to hit here and wipe me out, huh?
And became the director of the Central Labor Council in Los Angeles. He wanted to make sure that, again, the workers had a voice.
That's why, tell him, kid. Tell him, kid.
And he couldn't get the help that he needed from the people that had the resources, so he said to the labor people, the labor unions, "Let's get together and we'll build our own organization here."
I don't know if he likes milk. I've never even tried it.
To make sure that the workers not only participated, but they were represented. And so at the end of the day, he, Miguel Contreras, made Los Angeles' representation of workers what it is today. So we have a lot to remember him for and also to follow his lead, because he mentored so many leaders that are still practicing governance here in the city of Los Angeles. So I would like to say to everybody, let's please say.
Hey, Ruel. How are you? Sup, Touch?
Viva Miguel Contreras.
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Wow, are you? Everybody coming in late. LBC, how's it going? Yeah.
T. Sebuele. T. Sebuele. T. Sebuele.
What the fuck happened? What the fuck just happened?
Thank you. And now another fearless leader, the Honorable Senator from the twenty-sixth district.
What the fuck just happened?
Mary Elena Durazo.
Sorry, guys.
What the fuck just happened there? I didn't know what I touched.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember, and it's great to be back in City Hall. Spent many, many days here in the labor movement, advocating. But Miguel was, as Dolores says, was a very young man when he proudly joined his father, Julio, his mother, Esther, and their five brothers on the picket lines.
Hi, Jenna.
They, like thousands of farmworkers, they wanted one simple thing. They wanted to be represented by the United Farm Workers Union.
How many times did you say it, huh? Are you retarded?
Maybe a health plan and maybe a pension plan. More importantly, they wanted the dignity of their work to be recognized. You see, they were treated like the tools they used to harvest the crops. They were used and thrown away when broken.
City is got a Bernie shirt on. Fucking socialist idiot.
Miguel often told stories about how depression, intimidation was at times overwhelming.
How'd that work out for you, buddy? At least you got a free shirt, right?
One night, he said, "A grower pulled up to their tiny shack where they lived on the grower's property in their small town of Dinuba. The grower called out for Miguel's dad. The whole family came out onto the porch. Then the grower said, 'Julio, you're the best worker I got, but I can't have any chavistas here. You're going to have to leave.'"
I have bloodbath.
So the family was evicted. But they stuck together as a family and said, "Basta, enough."
No job for nine. I cannot.
They marched, they got arrested with nuns and priests, and they picketed.
Strict diet. Strict diet.
That's where and how Miguel learned to be an organizer. He learned from the best, Fred Ross Senior, Fred Ross Junior, Cesar Chavez, the Lord Es Huerta, and hundreds of fellow farmworkers. They became the generation of organizers that then spread out throughout the state and throughout the country. Our mutual love for the cause brought us together side by side.
Man, let's get through this.
Miguel, the brilliant political strategist, had a vision way ahead of most of us. He was determined to help build a labor movement with true solidarity. He knew he had to bring Latinos and immigrants together with African-Americans and unionized workers, and then use that power to create a middle-class standard for all workers. And this may sound like he was always serious.
Thank you, Job.
But those of you who knew him, remember.
He'll be okay. He's doing good. Doing a lot better.
His raw sense of humor. He was a prankster. He was a jokester, but he was a fisherman and he was a swap meet aficionado.
Oh, man, Kleema died today?
He bragged about his town, Dinuba.
Fifty. So young.
Called it the Big D.
Peter Kleema.
Where a movie theater was finally built and where Miguel was laid to rest.
My buddy, everybody's asking for you. Why don't you go sit in your chair?
On behalf of our family, Michael, Mario, Alessandra, and our granddaughters, Sydney and Senegal.
Go sit in your chair. Good boy. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I truly appreciate the president of the L.A. Federation of Labor, my sister Yvonne Wheeler, for organizing this commemoration. He loved you very much. Thank you.
He's a riot. He won't go into the, he's not going on the chair yet, but when he does, I'll put the camera on.
Thank you, Senator, and another fearless leader. The Honorable Hilda.
Yeah, but it's not healthy, though. You know what I mean? He needs to be, and I'll tell you what, he's already lost half a pound. He's doing good.
It's really hard to follow Maria Elena Durazo, who taught me early on also to be a warrior. And I want to remind people that one of the funniest things that Miguel would do would give people names, and he gave me a name. He said, "I was a warrior." And I thought, "A woman? A Latina? A pint-size at the time?" And he said, "Yes." And he was one of those leaders that saw so much more than what I saw in myself. I came into the State Assembly in ninety-two. He was there with me, the L.A. Fed, and also in my state senate race. Little did I know that he had a vision of seeing me move on, and I want to express that because sometimes it's hard to think about taking the risk, getting out of your comfort zone.
You don't like her jacket?
But he was always like that, pressing us to do much more. And I'll never forget when we had a conversation, people were telling me, "Hilda, it's time for you to move up." And I said, "Wait a minute. I'm not finished here in the state senate."
I know, gamer dude.
I just got through pushing forward.
That's all he got, was the free shirt.
To increase the wage, and he was a big part of that, our labor brother.
So socialists like it. Everything free.
We did it together.
Free shirts, free money, free healthcare, free everything. Don't work.
Why don't you think about going on?
It's what socialists like.
And other friends pushed me along to do that.
Sab, it's good to see you. Happy Friday, Sab.
Because I thought, "How is this going to happen? We, me, him, and the labor movement were going to take on an eighteen-year incumbent. Unheard of. You don't do that." And I remember those times because a lot of people distanced themselves from me.
That's right, Dodgers and Padres today. Was there a moth in here?
But I knew my values and my heart were with the labor movement, because that's all I knew. That's what I grew up with, and Miguel knew that as well, and so did Maria Elena. And they were there standing with me.
Hi, Turtle.
And I'm so happy that I was able to serve in the Congress, and I served there for almost eight years. And because of the hard work.
Yeah, that's what I said. Willie, didn't you hear me say it yesterday? When I was here yesterday, Cinco de Mayo is not a Mexican holiday. It's a Mexican-American holiday. Go to Mexico. What the fuck is Cinco de Mayo? It's the fifth of May. That's what I'm going to tell you. So that's some shit that's made up here, not there.
On his cabinet as the first Latina ever in the United States' history from California, from humble labor background.
I mean, it's really, it's really no different than, what was it yesterday? What was it yesterday? It wasn't Thai Day. What was it? Denim? No, it wasn't Denim Day. What was it yesterday? Which day was it yesterday? It wasn't Denim Day. It wasn't Thai Day. It was something day. Whatever day it was, it's like that. No different.
Foundation, his wife, his family have done for so many of us. So let us not forget this. The county of Los Angeles also wants to recognize him alongside.
Yeah, against the French.
Champions here, the family.
I know what they're talking about. I know what you're talking about.
Michael and also Maria Elena, on behalf of the county of Los Angeles.
They should make one of those for smoking scan. What do you guys think?
To the labor community and for the transforming of our underdog.
May the fourth be with me? Yes. It's still with me. EA. As much as you hate me for talking about EA and how much they fucking suck. Yes. Thanks for reminding me. I guess it's Spanish. Yes, I got it. Why does it say May fourth on the title? Is that why you guys say that?
Also like to present a resolution.
Doesn't say it on the title, does it?
Signed by all members of the city council. Again, just.
I know. It says Cinco de Mayo. It should say Cinco de Mayo on the thing. Yesterday was, was May fourth. May the fourth be with you.
T. Sebuele.
That's why I had the stormtrooper one the day before. It says Cinco, right? Okay, good. Well, I mean, you know, the title sometimes doesn't change, this stupid thing. So I don't know if it's on the May fourth or whatever title. So I didn't understand what you guys are saying. Oh, come on, can we get to the people now? Where's Mr. Sax? Where's Mr. Harlan? Where's the chick who gets raped in her sleep by Obama? Where is President Biden's son? I'm going to need all four of them to step up first. I'm going to need you guys up at the podium very first before anybody. Then we're going to need Goat Boy right after that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Price.
Who else?
This concludes our presentation. Thank you to all of our honored guests.
There's somebody else I'm missing, guys. Oh, oh, the Dr. D.
We're honored to have you here.
I like her. Stacy Cigar Bolinger.
We all consider ourselves part.
I want all of them in a row right now.
Family, so thank you very much, and we're honored to have you here. Before we go to our next presentation.
That's Mr. Harlan, Vid.
Mr. Herman, your sign is in violation of our council rules. If I see it again.
It's a swastika.
You will be removed from the council chambers. If I see it, you will be removed from the council chambers.
That's the guy. Mr. Herman is the one putting up that swastika.
Keep it down. You will not disrupt this meeting. All right.
I told you he had a swastika, and that's why he addressed it. Mr. Herman, he's the one that goes really crazy. He's there, though.
And I'd like to call on Councilmember De Leon.
In the American flag shirt. Piece of shit. Fucking asshole. Oh, where are you going, girl? Hmm. I guess it ain't time to work anymore.
There will be silence in this council chambers. You will not disrupt this meeting.
What's going on?
Sergeants, whoever is shouting out, I want them removed from the council chambers.
Did you guys see what's going on? Who's, why are they going?
Whoever is shouting out, I'm telling you, this time only, you will be silent during this council meeting, or else you will be removed pursuant to Council Rule twelve. There's not going to be discussion about this. You will be removed under Council Rule twelve if you shout out.
He didn't see? No, De Leon's not there. He'd be sitting next to me.
Mr. President, my colleagues, good morning to each and every one of you.
You're right.
Muy buenas.
You're right.
Las armas nacionales se han cubierto de gloria. The national arms have been covered with glory. El general Ignacio Zaragoza, quien lideró el ejército mexicano, se dice que pronunció estas famosas frases para celebrar la victoria de batalla de Puebla. Es un honor estar aquí con ustedes hoy día, ciento sesenta y un años después de esa gran victoria, para darles la bienvenida a esta presentación especialmente a nuestros invitados de honor, muchos de los cuales son descendientes de esa batalla que ahora viven en el distrito número catorce y en toda la región de Los Ángeles.
Cool pictures.
General Ignacio Zaragoza, who led the Mexican Army, is said to have offered the famous phrase to celebrate the victory at the Battle of Puebla. It is my honor, Mr. President, to be here today, one hundred and sixty-one years after that great victory.
They're not going to do, they're going to keep.
Especially to welcome our honored guests, many of whom are descendants of that battle who now live in Council District fourteen as well as across the region. Now contrary to modern TV and radio ads.
Get the fucking architecture.
Cinco de Mayo is not a party holiday or Mexican Independence Day. Cinco de Mayo is a holiday of pride, one to commemorate the Mexican Army's decisive victory over French forces that were considered to be one of the best in the world at the time.
Told you it was the French.
Armas nacionales se han cubierto de gloria. It's a poetic way of expressing the pride and honor for the poblano soldiers who fought and died defending their homeland against foreign invaders. Today, this phrase has become part of Mexican national lore, a symbol of the spirit of resistance and resilience.
I like this hat. His hat is awesome.
This is often associated with Mexican history and culture. The Mexican Army, commanded by General Ignacio Zaragoza, had fewer troops and less advanced weaponry than the French forces, but they managed to defeat them in a surprising and decisive victory at Puebla. These poblano soldiers were able to achieve a significant victory despite being outnumbered and outgunned by the French troops. Their victory brought honor and respect to all Mexican people. El ciclo de mayo, amigas y amigos, es en esencia una celebración de la cultura y patrimonio mexicano, en lugar de una conmemoración de un evento histórico específico. Para mí es un honor estar aquí acompañado hoy día por varias personas destacadas que representan México y al estado de Puebla. It's an honor for me to be here today with individuals representing Mexico, the state of Puebla, and poblanos here in the United States. With us today, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, we have Rodolfo Paria, Consul de Protección del Consulado General de México en Los Ángeles. We also have Luis Alberto Espinoza, representing the state government of El Pueblo. We have with us Sebastián Celia Carrillo, Director de Mi Casa es Puebla in Boyle Heights and East LA. And with us today, in a few moments, you'll hear from José Manuel Bonilla, who will narrate the presentation of the history and the dance you'll see today.
We're never gonna get to it. We're never gonna get to it. We gotta dance to get through.
Cinco de Mayo is at heart a celebration of Mexican culture and heritage rather than a commemoration of a specific historic event. And that's why I'm honored to be here with so many wonderful individuals. We will hear from them in just a few moments, but I want to first say this.
Did I call him coño?
Que el Cinco de Mayo marcó un gran momento en la historia de México, pero también moleando a los Estados Unidos. Cinco de Mayo marks a great moment in Mexican history, one that ended up shaping the United States as well. A few years after the Battle of Puebla, thanks to the continued bravery and sacrifices of the Mexican people, France's occupation was ended forever, changing the course of Mexican and American history. That great victory cannot be separated from the courageous people of Puebla, who like the rest of Mexico are a mix of various ethnic and cultural groups, including indigenous peoples and those of European, African, and Asian ancestry.
Imagine making that, like chiseling that. It's insane.
Puebla tiene una rica historia indígena. Es un hogar de varias comunidades indígenas, incluyendo a los pueblos Nahuatl, Totonaca, y Popoluca, quienes todos han contribuido a la riqueza de la cultura mexicana y estadounidense. Esta es otra razón por la cual celebramos hoy día la importancia de este evento, para que la riqueza de esas culturas siga viva y vibrante, y que todos podemos apreciarla y compartirla. Puebla, Puebla is also a rich indigenous, has a rich indigenous history. It's home to several indigenous communities, including Nahuatl, Totonac, and Popoluca, peoples of who have contributed to the richness of Mexican culture and American culture. This is another reason that today's celebration is so important, so that the richness of those cultures remains alive and vibrant for all of those to appreciate and share.
Cheers, love, love.
Now, no Cinco de Mayo would be complete without food and music and dance. So I'd like to invite you all also too, to members as well as staff, you know, to the, after council today, to City Hall East Plaza, where they will continue today's festivities. Now, it is my honor to introduce Rodolfo Paria, Consul de Protección del Consulado General de México. Rodolfo.
¡Viva México!
¡Que viva!
¡Y la Puebla!
¡Que viva!
¡Viva Cinco de Mayo!
¡Que viva!
Well, you already hear about Cinco de Mayo.
I know you heard that. I know you heard that. Look at her, she's looking back like, who said that? She's giving him the evil eye.
The Consulate General of Mexico in Los Angeles. We are very grateful to.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
No worries.
Whoever's shouting out, I want them removed right now. They're violating Rule 12 of the council and they're to be removed from the council. They're gonna be subject to Rule 7 as well. Leave the meeting, leave silently. You're ordered removed. Leave silently and immediately.
Who is it? Mr. Herman?
Sir, sit down. You're blocking people's views.
Look, he's already pissed. Look at him. He's already fucking shitfaced. And he ain't even talked to the public yet. He hasn't even seen anybody from the public yet.
And the city council of Los Angeles, and with the government of Puebla, and of course, with Mi Casa es Puebla.
It is an honor.
Sorry, sir. The guy in the black jacket with the red stripes, you were just shouting again. Council President, I suggest we order him removed. I heard him and I saw him talking again in the.
I heard him. I saw him talking.
Yes, you were. There will be silence, or else you will be removed. There will be silence. There will be no shouting out. Alright, go, go right ahead, sir.
Does shit say NFL on the back of his shit? NFL number 7?
With you, the 5th of May, 1862, which holds great significance.
Hall monitor. I saw him.
And our community.
Eyes, the hall monitor.
So, muchas gracias por permitirnos estar aquí y el mayor de los éxitos. Thank you very much.
Oh yeah, he's a big kid.
Gracias, Rodolfo. Now, I want to introduce a beautiful traditional dance called La Danza de los Tecuanes, whose choreography is full of symbolism and music played on traditional instruments.
Someone scream out, "Fuck you, KDL again." Fuck you, KDL. That's hysterical.
Hello everyone, um, thank you for having us here. Um, so we are the Tantas of the Quanes and we derive from a town in Puebla. So we're called, from Aguillando, Sorio. Just a little bit of an introduction here, um, the Quanes derives from the Nahuatl language, one of the many indigenous languages in Mexico, and unfortunately eradicated by Spanish colonization, and it's man eater. Um, here.
Man eater.
Also going to have um, flags here that says Vioja Lucas, which is one of the leaders, and represents leadership, and it's an awake, also represents um, just how we defend ourselves as we dance, and then just the whole overall story of our dance here called Tecuanes. So thank you for having us and thank you.
Look at Stinks on the new camera. Look at Stinks on the new camera. Stinks is enamored with the dance. Loves it. I want the tiger thing for, for Halloween. That'd be fresh. It's got the whole suit, dope ass mask and everything with it. I think it's a tiger. It's either a cheetah or a tiger. I think it's a tiger. Oh, Mr. Herman's still there. He's filming it with his phone. You see him? Oh, you can't see him. You guys can't see him, but he is. He's filming it. Is it have a pipe in his mouth? Hell yeah, a joint? These aren't real dancers from Mexico? You're saying they are lying? I like their outfits. Those are some cool masks. Somebody made some cool ass masks. Be fun to have one of those for Halloween. Except for the long beard probably catch fire. I'm trying to smoke. Although the beard makes it dope. Right? The beard makes it dope. Next up, Ukraine. It's not Ukraine Day. Well, it's fusion. Just like the lot of food we have here. It's fusion food. Where are you going, Alst? Calm down. That's all we get of you, huh? Okay. Weird cat you are. No, you're not going over here. No, no, no. You're not going over there with step on stuff. Come on, what are you doing? My tax dollars at work, yes. What I want you to know is like, take a look at homeboy, like when they switch the camera, you can see it says NFL 7 on his, on the back of his shit. All the way to the left of the screen when it goes back. Kid, howdy, here's things. Come on. What are you doing? It's a long dance. It's a good workout. Well, it's speeding up. They have to be tired. I don't give a shit who you are. You're huffing and puffing in there, right? Just doing that, what they're doing for fucking three straight four minutes with that on, you're huffing and puffing. Depending on how good your uh, cardio is, of course. Yes, those are human beings in there. Those are not uh, robots, androids, or even um, what do you call it? What are those things called? Holograms. Rumba class? A lumba? Yeah, man, that should've, makes you work. Uh-oh, the tiger's eating me. The tiger's eating me.
¡Que viva!
Tiger done ate you.
¡Que viva!
Tiger ate you.
¡Viva México!
¡Que viva! Tiger always gets his meal.
Now, Mr. President, it is my honor to bring up José Manuel Bonilla, who will give us a, a, a little history behind this dance.
Muchas gracias. Eh, agradezco la invitación del concejal Kevin DeLeon por estar el día de hoy aquí. Reciban un saludo del pueblo de Tetela de Ocampo, Puebla.
Being present here today.
Bueno, el día de hoy venimos a hablar un poco de.
Today, we've come to speak to you a little bit about. Hola, disculpe.
Sí, eh, del pueblo de Tetela de Ocampo donde somos originarios.
About Tetela de Ocampo is the town where we originate from.
Tetela de Ocampo, Puebla, aquí traigo nuestro. Del lugar donde vengo.
This is where we come from.
Y del lugar donde, eh, un día como hoy de 5 de mayo pero de 1862.
Today, May 5, 1862.
Eh, la batalla de Puebla.
Is when the Battle of Puebla occurred.
También venimos aquí representando al sexto Batallón de la Guardia Nacional.
They're coming to represent the sixth battalion of the National Guard in Puebla.
Donde eh, este sexto batallón peleó con el ejército del Oriente.
Where it was the sixth battalion that fought with.
They do. Lots of people do golf.
French army in the Orient.
Estando a la cabeza el general Ignacio Zaragoza.
Ignacio Zaragoza was the lieutenant at the head, captain at the head.
Eh, algunos otros estados de la república como fue Michoacán, Veracruz, Oaxaca, Puebla.
There were other states in the Republic. Michoacán, Veracruz, Oaxaca, Puebla, San Luis Potosí.
Aquí se está representando a todos esos personajes que estuvieron en esta importante batalla.
So we represent here all the different characters that took part in this very important battle.
Una batalla donde la soberanía de México estuvo en riesgo por el ejército francés.
It was a battle where Mexican sovereign state was in the risk or in danger because of the French army.
En ese momento, el ejército considerado el más poderoso del mundo.
Yeah, at the time, it was considered one of the most powerful armies in the world, the French army.
Y estos grandes personajes como Benito Juárez, Ignacio Zaragoza, Castillo Díaz, los tres Juanes de la Sierra.
These great people, Benito, Zaragoza, Ignacio, Juárez, perdón? Eh, and los tres Juanes?
Los tres Juanes de la Sierra de Puebla.
The three Juanes from the Puebla Sierra.
It's crazy how like everybody wore hats then.
Eh, a nuestro país en esta memorable batalla de 5 de mayo de 1862.
Have covered in glory our country on this battle, May 5, 1862.
Y el día de hoy pues reconocemos esa importante batalla, el día de hoy agradecemos esta invitación que nos hicieron, el día de hoy conmemoramos Puebla.
So we'd like to recognize this very important battle today and commemorate Puebla, and thank you for this very gracious invitation that you have provided us.
Eh, Tetela de Ocampo con sus cuatro compañías.
So from the Tetela de Ocampo and its four companies.
Sacapuazla con una compañía.
Sacapuaz is one of the companies.
Y Sochapulco con una compañía.
Sichoculpo with one of the companies.
Creando el sexto Batallón de la Guardia Nacional.
See, there's a guy behind this guy that's wearing like a whole, like a studded suit. And beha- on the back of it, it says number, it says NFL number 7. Who's 7? Kaepernick?
Represented here with all these people from Tetela de Ocampo.
Kaepernick 7? I think he was.
¡Viva México!
I don't know who he's celebrating. And they're like Buffalo Bill colors. Who's 7 on the Bills? Nobody. Not Jim Kelly, he was 12. Yeah. Trying to think who the hell on Buffalo would be wearing 7? It'd be a kicker. Like my bro, Pat McAfee. Shout out to Pat.
Bueno, lo presentamos aquí este, al pueblo este, poblano presente hoy día este, con nosotros.
Yeah, I wish you could see him. Fuck. Just can't see him. Let me do this. He's got a weird mask on too.
¡Viva México!
¡Que viva!
¡Que viva la batalla del Cinco de Mayo!
¡Que viva!
¡Que viva, Kenny!
Now they changed it.
¡Viva!
There he is, right there.
Okay.
This guy. The scary mask on and the hat. If you can see the back of him, I want you to, if, if they show it, I want you to take a look at the back of him.
Mr. President, I would be remiss if I just didn't add one last thing, because I, I believe Avak had just mentioned it to me a few moments ago, that every single year, he actually displays in that hallway adjacent to the refrigerator, uh, these two pictures, every Cinco de Mayo. And he says that people walk by and they see them and they don't know who they are, they just walk by. To give it a little context, if you will, um, on Netflix, there is a series called The Empress. And I don't know if folks have seen it, The Empress. It's about Franz Joseph and uh, the, the Austrian monarchy, and the empress being the woman he eventually marries, and she's a very self-empowered feminist woman, I would say. It's a very good uh, series. Well, Franz Joseph and the empress has a brother. And the brother is in that Netflix series, Maximilian, Maximiliano. And this is Maximilian of the Austrian monarchy, who was the emperor of Mexico. He came in all the way from Vienna, Austria. This gentleman to my right, right here, is the founding father of Mexico. This is Benito Juárez. So this would be the George Washington of Mexico, right here. So, Maximilian from Vienna, Austria was obviously in Mexico for quite some years as the ruler.
Beard game was kinda off, but strong at the same time?
This gentleman right here, Mr. Benito Juárez, through the battle, you know, in the war, captured Maximiliano. Maximilian, uh, they had pleaded for him to release him and return him back to Vienna, Austria. Our, our president, Benito Juárez.
We got a lot of Austrians here. Arnold Schwanzen Schwazza. He's from Austria.
Was actually executed uh, by Benito Juárez's troops in Mexico. But to give you some context, it gives you a little bit of history from Vienna, Austria, The Empress on Netflix, Emiliano, no, Emiliano Zapata, digo, este, Benito Juárez, no, y, y los poblanos here. So this is a great day where we commemorate, we give the real history of, 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 of Mexico, of Puebla, the battles, difference. And I thank you each and every one of you for this wonderful presentation. Gracias a todos. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you.
Hitler was Austrian, unfortunately. Wasn't trying to mention his name, but yes.
Bienvenidos a todos los poblanos.
Him and Arnold are probably the most two famous.
Thank you very much. Uh, we next have.
Switched it. Man, next.
We next have a presentation by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Bro, really?
You have the floor.
Man, no wonder we only get two people to talk nowadays, because all you do is, that, that's what they're purposely doing. They're bringing these people in, do your dog and pony show, so that way the, the people can't talk. And then that way, they give two people each, one on the phone and one in here, and you can't say we didn't give you time to talk.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Well, it's only in Los Angeles that we celebrate Miguel Contreras.
Look at the back, says NFL.
And one of the greatest ska bands in the history of the music industry. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, today I have with me the uh,
I gotta look at, I gotta.
I'm so privileged to have someone who I've uh, over the course of the years have come to know, because.
Gonna read it on the paper.
As a longstanding fan of ska and uh, this individual's incredible musical excellence. I have none other than the great Dave Wakeling from The English Beat joining us here today. If you please grant me a round of applause.
I needed to look down at the paper, because I didn't know who I was addressing in a moment. I'm so honored to address this person and honor them.
In my excitement and enthusiasm of celebrating one of my favorite bands that created revolutionary music that promotes peace, love, and unity. It is in fact, the only way. As it was proclaimed in the lyrics of Wine and Grind and Stand Down Margaret, many of you know that my husband and I are avid concert go- concert goers, and in fact, it remains part of our secret sauce, and I'd like to uh, play a little clip.
She likes the horns, I bet.
That's me on the stage, because you can't get me off the stage when I'm here.
I bet. I bet. Gotta get a fucking cane and pull her by the neck. Get out of here.
And if you don't know skanking, my husband's the best at it.
English Beat Day. Today is English Beat Day.
Celebrate music and musicians.
It's not just Cinco de Mayo, it's English Beat Day. Don't forget it.
Positive empowerment, racial inclusivity.
My gosh.
And unity. When I ask people if they like ska, they often are not familiar with the term.
Right.
But when you play the music, you are instantly put in a good mood and transported to familiar songs that you know. Not recognizing it, I'd like to properly introduce you to the music that does not get much recognition, uh, recognition as other genres. But whether you know them as the beat, the English beat, or general public, you certainly know the music. Please.
Hold on, ah, 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 guys, hold on a second. Let them get the copyright strike, because I ain't getting it. Oh, shit, yeah, I ain't getting that. I know that's fucking copyrighted shit. So yeah, we're gonna, we're just gonna mute this here and talk for just a moment while we hear fucking tenderness in the back. Tenderness. Whatever the fuck it is. Uh, so yeah, there is that. Don't wanna get into it. I guarantee you, they're getting a copyright strike right now. They're, they're busy honoring these people. Meanwhile, they're, the, the people that own that catalog are busy saying, "Oh yeah, well you honor them, we're gonna honor you with a copyright strike." So yeah, yeah, let them do that. Soon as that stops playing, we'll go right back to it. Gotta be, gotta be quick with it, ladies and gentlemen. Otherwise, they will zap you. Zapped. You got zapped. So, yeah. Yeah, honor with some more money, that's it. Yeah, we're gonna need that. We're gonna need all the click money from your video, thanks to you playing our song that you don't own and they don't own. That's how that works. So that's how it works, ladies and gentlemen. With YouTube, it's, you know, most of these other places, like I bet you Rumble, they probably don't give a fuck. Twitch doesn't give a fuck. I have a lot of DJ friends that do full DJ sets. Don't care. Twitch does not bother them. But when it comes to YouTube, oh yeah. Anything more than four seconds, four seconds of any copyrighted song? And that's why, if you notice, these drops of songs are three seconds or less, because realistically, you, you know, in your life, you think, oh, three seconds, that's so fast. But it really isn't when it comes to the terms of drops. Like you can actually say quite a bit in three seconds. You know what I mean? You wouldn't think it, but you could. And if I did a drop set or one second, it's almost, it's too fast. It's so fast that the machine's hard drive won't even pick it up. You know what I mean? So, yeah. Yeah. Gotta do it. So, any moment now, guys, they'll stop with this, you know, music. We'll go back to their spiel and hopefully they'll be fucking done. And we can get down to the nitty gritty for the ones that have come here for the first time. We will, um, we will, uh, see and hear the people of the city talk and it looks like they're almost done. Let's see. All right. Is it done?
The English Beat consists of.
Oh, there's our homeboy back there.
Roger Charlie, best known as Ranking Roger, who we celebrate today posthumously. Who was part of the vocals, Andy Cox on guitar, David Steele on bass, Everett Morton on drums, and foundational first wave ska legend Saxa on saxophone. I am honored to have with us today, Dave Wakeling, the stellar vocalist and guitarist from the band.
Sup Ernst?
Dave has been a Los Angeles resident for over thirty-five years and has continued to keep the beat alive.
Look at, look at Mr. Herman making his face back there. Look at him. That's the guy holding up the swastika.
As the band continues to tour the world.
The guy doing that with his tongue?
With an all-star ska backing band.
How's the fool holding up the swastika?
Playing all the hits of the beat, general public and his new songs. Dave has shown appreciation for the city's cutting edge of civic policy and he lives up to the two-tone ideal of tolerance and inclusion.
Off his meds today.
Forming in nineteen seventy-eight, the English Beat, originally known as The Beat, has been producing incredible music and filling dance floors all over the world for more than forty years.
He is BJ. I think he's just off his, off his meds.
The English Beat lifted the spirits of the people during an era of social and economic turmoil in the United Kingdom.
Is she a groupie? Oh, for sure. Look at him back there. Look at him. Look at him.
By promoting love and harmony.
Do you remember last time when he was walking back and forth like a little bunny? Like he was hopping around the back. Look at him.
Can't Get Used to Losing You, Mirror in the Bathroom and countless others are still played today.
Dude's off his fucking rocker, dude.
Their music has an incredible mix of ska, reggae, soul, pop, punk.
That's what happens, ladies and gentlemen, when you don't take that pill in the morning.
The beat is not only, they're not only musical legends, but they are an exemplar of selflessness.
But did you become a nutbar?
They brought awareness to complex problems through their music. And after a successful release of their single Stand Down Margaret, the band donated all of their profits.
Come on, girl. We don't need to know about all their shit.
For nuclear disarmament, an organization that advocated for the unilateral nuclear disarmament of the United Kingdom.
I know that. They were the ones that saved the UK.
They also donated their music to anti-nuclear and social campaigns with their benefit albums.
Those patriots.
Life in the European theater and the world of music and dance.
Shout out to the UK.
No, not gonna fucking do Stone Age.
Rude boys and rude girls from all over the world, from the world of ska. A term that is worn with a badge of honor to describe a lover of ska music and someone with a great appreciation for history and style.
She likes to hear herself talk.
The, this is the fundamental belief that remains.
Man, she wrapped that shit up, B.
And I want to thank you, Dave, and your entire band for the countless and decades, uh, for the countless shows and decades of music and happiness that you provided to countless rude boys and rude girls around the world. It is with great pleasure that on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council.
Right. Need to give her the buzzer in the one minute.
Because he's, uh, embarking on his tour. Uh, that we had to do this on today.
Look at him back there. Look at him. Look at him. Look at him.
The Los Angeles City Council declares May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, more than forty years after that first album release. We are dedicating May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
That's why you have to have the LAPD standing right there. You don't know if that motherfucker could jump over there and kill you, crazy motherfucker.
Ladies and gentlemen, the incredible Dave Wakeling.
Remember, it's full moon, so it's only gonna affect him even more. So he's really going off his rocker. No meds, full moon. He can't help himself.
Thank you very much for having me here. I'm honored.
Peace off, mate.
Seen this gorgeous building on the television a lot of times.
The telly. You gotta say it like Roy. The telly.
I'm proud to live here. Compassion and community, uh, that's what's going to save everybody and Los Angeles has often been at the front of that. I'm proud to be here. Thank you for this award. I'm honored.
So Dave, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we declare May twenty-second, English Beat Day in LA.
English Beat Day, mates. Hopefully they're done and then we can get down to fucking business. It'd be really nice.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Be really nice.
All right, uh, we're ready next, Matt Clerk, I believe, to go to public comments. So if you could please.
Fifty-five fucking minutes of fucking around. Fifty-five fucking minutes.
Mister City Attorney, if you could go over the guidelines for your public comment, please.
Thank you. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call six six nine two five four five two five two.
Guys wanna call in, you can call in. No joke. Numbers right there.
Use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six and press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute. Let me repeat, call six six nine two five four five two five two and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six and press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute. Thank you.
All right, so for members of.
It's a different city clerk, BJ. This one's not as scared, I'm guessing. Cause the guy, it's usually a guy and then there's another, and then the other girl, the lady. There's three different ones. Guy is, a guy and two girls.
In general public comment.
Caller, that chick. Caller.
And just please begin. The, uh, the only thing we request is that you do be speaking about something within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city and as a reminder.
Doesn't this guy ooze sexuality?
An automated Zoom voice will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself.
I mean, that's a man.
If you don't do so, council staff will prompt you, more usually by leading, reading off the last four digits of your phone number.
The only pussy he's ever touched was his mom's when he fell out of it.
And as always, there is a deep time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast for the people phoning in. So please, uh, if you're listening on multiple devices, when it's like channel thirty-five, YouTube, when it's your turn to speak, turn down the volume on the devices right away. And while you're waiting for your turn to speak, please keep one end of the phone so you hear in real time when it's your turn to press star six.
He's a meat eater.
Mr. President, ready to take public comment? Thank you very much. We'll begin with public comment here in the John Farrow Council.
Come on, let's get some good shit going. Stir it up. Let's go.
As I call your name, please make your way to me.
I need some seasoning, some spice on this joint.
Side of the council chambers, uh, where the sergeant will be able to, um, direct you to the podium. Adam Sappenfield, Dr. D.
Ooh, Dr. D.
Austin S.
Okay, Dr. D.
George Harrod and Anay Castillo, please.
All right, we got one good one in that batch. Dr. D ain't gonna, is gonna give him some shit. For sure. She's gonna cuss at him. If she's a doctor, I'm a pope.
Good morning. No, it's, it's one minute, so.
It's just one minute. Yes, you had to sit fifty-five minutes and listen to all that crap to get one minute to talk to me. Go.
First time in this building as well, um, it's, it's a little atrocious, you know, I came with the Stop LAPD Spying Coalition. Trying to stop the robot dog. And the conditions I see in LA and the conditions I see in this building. There was a, there was a Templar building on the coast.
Templar?
And when Templars lost, every part of this fortress was taken and built to build the city. To build another city. So all, every stone was taken. Because I think the poverty, I think the keeping in people and jobs and only saying yes, sir, and not being able to be individuals, keeps people down and sends us backwards in terms of human evolution. I want, uh, a better Los Angeles than we have now. Thank you.
Dude, what drugs is he on, dude? He's all over the place. He's here, then he's there, then he's right in the middle monotone. Boy, he was all over the place quietly.
Okay, what I noticed is most of you left the chamber when Kevin came up to speak. I appreciate that, but.
I appreciate.
There was Mr. Lee, there was Mr. Bloomfield, and there was Tracy Park, who is my district representative and I'm disgusted with the three of you. Completely disgusted. This man ought never to be allowed to speak before this council. Ever, ever, ever. In addition, no robo dogs. These are military weapons. Boys and their toys. The cops love to play with their weapons. They have accelerated their uses of every single technology we've given them. Don't give them this. It looks like a gift. It's not a gift. You all know that the Police Protective Association has bought this city and paid for all of your jobs.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Basically, the military dogs that, that military is using the robotic dogs instead of soldiers. They want to use those instead of fifty thousand dollar canine dogs, real dogs. So they want to switch them and that's what they're asking funding for. It's a legit, it's a legitimate thing they're asking for right now. Real little robot dogs, no joke.
Um, in regards to the Housing and Homeless Committee report, I see that you guys are still working with Hackla and LASSA. Both of these agencies have been working on solving the issue with homelessness for over twenty years and have succeeded, um, to solve the problem. The problem has gotten, um, prominently worse.
Progressively worse. There's Mr. Herman. Look at him back there.
With Hackla. So I came here, I've been coming here for the last like year or so. I'm still currently homeless. Um, Mr. Kevin De Leon connected me with his homeless deputy, Mr. Mathewton Chavez, and he connected me with Hackla to reinstate my, um, my, my application. Um, I've been working with them. I was working with them and complying with everything that they asked me for. And, um,
He is Dave.
They sent me a letter of withdrawal.
Look at him.
Even after I complied and submitted all of the documentation that I needed to submit and they, um, they, they said,
I hope he doesn't get kicked out.
The withdrawal was because I provided false information when that has not been true and letting them know from the beginning.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry that you, but your time has expired.
So sorry. Suck it. Look at him flicking off. Who's he flicking off right now? Don't get kicked out, Mr. Herman. This fool's right on the li- he's right on the edge right now. Look at him now. Look at him now.
Get it together here, okay?
Look at him. He just.
First mama ask, um, how much time do I get?
You got one minute. You already wasted twenty seconds of it.
Address one twenty-one twenty-two and public comment. Do I have permission? First of all, I'd like to say I was in.
Sir.
Yes, how can I help?
Go ahead and reset, reset the clock.
So you already burned twenty.
Let me say who I am. My birth name is George H E R O D. I'm known as Pancake, Mr. Pancake.
You'll have one minute.
What's that now?
You'll have one minute.
Can you reset it?
Yes.
Okay, you need to know why I'm Mr. Pancake. Pancake, I'm international, proud LA native. No to robot dogs, no to robot dogs, no to robot dogs.
No.
That's where I start.
That's where he started, three times.
I'm an LA native. I love my city. Anything related to housing, I will let my voice be heard. Fight, fight, fight. Housing is a human right. Support improving communication between Hackla case managers and EHB participants. A message to city employees. Take a crash course in anti-racism and compassion, respect for all, have more cultural insensitivity. I pray this weekend.
Insensitivity? Cultural insensitivity?
Your religion. Did you hear me?
Did you hear? Cultural insensitivity.
Your humanity. Did you hear that? It's not about your religion. It's about your humanity.
That's right, coming to America. You don't forget it.
And I get it right on.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Thank you. And, and sir, did you sign up under a different name? Because you didn't sign up under Mr. Pancake.
Because you didn't sign up as Mr. Pancake.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
You didn't sign up as Mr. Pancake. I'm gonna need you to do that next time, Billy.
Thank you, sir.
This shit is just comical, dude.
Good morning.
Uh-oh, here we go.
Sappenfield, um, I'm the adopted son of the President of the United States, Joe Biden. I, I recently married his daughter too and we've been having some trouble recently in Riverside County. Um, the sheriff of Riverside County, Chad Bianco, and one of the district representatives, Karen Spiegel, have actually murdered one of my family members, my mother. And they, they assisted each other in covering it up. And I, I just, I'm looking for representation with help in this matter. Um, me and my wife have investigated this problem over the last like two to three years and we've uncovered just a, a wave of corruption in Riverside County. So any of you attorneys up there, any of you council members, if, if you can help us in any way, we're looking for help and.
Oh, you need it, huh?
Uh, just we're available. We're in LA. I'm a musician. I'm regularly playing on, on the boardwalk on Hollywood Boulevard and just come speak to us anytime. We're open. We're available. Thank you.
Sounds about right.
I'm gonna call out a few more names now.
You play your instrument on Hollywood Boulevard?
Megan D, Mr. G and Herman.
Mr. G and, oh, you know who Herman is. Oh boy. And we ain't talking about Herman Munster either, man.
I've always wanted a ham radio set.
I'm here in opposition to the police robot dog. During the prior session, you asked several questions and I have a few of my own. First, how many robots are being currently employed on patrol? We know that there are at least two because of civilians who have taken video of their operation. Second, what guarantees do we have that the LAPD will operate these robots within policy? We have already seen LAPD not sustain complaints, even with video evidence supplied, or have complaints sustained but no discipline enacted. What guardrails will keep the cops within policy and how can the council guarantee compliance when LAPD violates policy on the regular? Finally, what assurances do we have that this robot won't be primarily deployed in black and brown communities to surveil them as has happened in the past? Please consider asking these questions yourself.
So it's okay if they surveil white neighborhoods? I'm all for equality, but white people are racist.
I'll speak on items. Oh wait, you're not letting me speak on any items since you don't want to hear from us. So I'll just do general comment. Um, all right, so, um, first of all, fuck the robot dog. Um, and you, it's just ending up, and Paul, you're just becoming, the same things that are happening, happened to Nuri are happening to you. Nuri couldn't actually manage to even find the votes and we know why it's continued because you still haven't found all of the, managed to get enough council members on your side. No one likes you. You're terrible at actually getting anything passed. Um, just a couple, about a month or so ago, you stood in this chamber and said that, um, that what happened to like the Tennessee three is an example of what's wrong with the country and such. But meanwhile, um, you, you seem to have a problem with, um, the same kind of thing happening in your chamber. Um, arrested another person today. Um, meanwhile, before you became council president, they'd arrested like two people in the last ten years or whatever. Um, so, and get out, KDL.
Ten ums, baby. Ten quick ums in one minute. I like how he just shakes his hand to like deal with the stress of the situation.
Hi, my name is Megan Dopkin. I'm coming here from Beverly Hills, California.
Hi, Megan, from Beverly Hills.
The Mecca of.
What?
Law enforcement protection.
The Mecca? She couldn't even think of it.
Nobody is asking for the robot dog. We don't want it. It is so clearly about the protection of private companies. It's so clearly an overreach by the police foundation into this governing body. And you know everything already. I know you know because there's been public outcry twice already. Once in the committee and once sixty days ago. You know everything there is to know about how it's gonna impact poor, black and brown communities. And some of you, I think, just don't care. Some of you care very much. I actually think, uh, some of the people who care very much are here and many of the people that don't care are not. So what you may not care about is the optic. You all are in the wrong direction. This is, this council's illegitimate. KDL is still here. The optics of putting a robot dog on the streets in this moment this year? Are you kidding?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Emotional damage. So she lives in Beverly Hills. She made sure you knew that. Yet I need you to know that Beverly Hills is not policed by LAPD or, or any other robot dogs. Okay? They're policed by their own police department, PHPD. So what is she even talking about? Karen? Person on March seventh. Number one, about whether drone policy has changed or not. Immediately after two thousand eighteen, they expanded drone use into various other departments going beyond SWAT. Then they added the MCIT for traffic monitoring, uh, to, to survey and.
Then they added the M C I T for traffic monitoring uh, to, to survey and investigate traffic accidents. And now in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget, they have proposed the use of drones uh, to, for, to surveil and scan crowds. So that's the kind of bullshit and that's the kind of lies blatantly that have been weaved by the LAPD. Uh, secondly, this whole issue about that this is just a gift. Well, Palantir was a gift by Target in two thousand seven, then ended up paying thirteen million dollars. Body camera was a gift and then ended up paying sixty-two million dollars. So these kind of lies keep on going on and on and on. And then lastly, Hugo Martinez asked about the visibility piece and they said this is for low visibility. They bought a drone in two thousand eighteen that can go into remote places on low visibility and where there's darkness and no light as well. So we gotta stop this thing and we gotta get this out.
Look at Mr. Herman going crazy over there.
Next speaker, please.
Guys, viewer discretion is advised.
Some more names.
Viewer discretion is advised.
Alita Weiner.
Viewer discretion is advised.
Cat Lego, Laura, and Ian Jameson.
Next speaker, he's wild, he'll say wild shit, racist shit, I don't condone any of it, but I can't stop it, okay?
Well, the challenges we face today regarding our signs is that we should always believe that when we're right, we're right. So let me read into the content of the record about the political arena regarding Brandon Burke versus Ohio. A dirty nigger, send the Jews back to Israel, let's give them back to the dark garden to save America. Let's go back to the constitutional betterment and bring the Turks to have the Armenians surrender. Bury the niggers, we intend to do our part.
So Brandon Burke versus Ohio is a libel case that's not within the jurisdiction of the council. So Mr. Herman, you're not speaking to anything before, you're not, you're, you're not,
Oh, he's going crazy.
Sit down, sit down, have him removed, have him removed for disrupting the meeting.
Stop shouting.
You're violating Rule Twelve by disrupting this meeting, please leave and leave silently. General public comment is not the time to rant racist epithets. It's the time to speak to the council about matters that are before the council or that are within the council's jurisdiction.
Told you he's gonna go wild.
Nothing you said has anything to do with the council's jurisdiction, please leave.
This is probably on all the kinds of meds.
Candito, Cat Lego, Laura, Ian Jameson, Johnny G, and,
I don't see Mr. Sacks back there, uh, Robert. I'm looking, I don't, I mean, there's some, but I could be wrong.
To Officer Armstrong back there. He has to uh, be treated with uh, disgraced and, and called names because of you, Mr. De Leon. I tried to,
Fuck you, look at him, look at him back there.
I'm so happy when I saw these Latino politicians. And we can't take it, you can't divide this city, sir. You're not worth it. That man shouldn't have to go through what he goes through as an officer, just trying to do his job because you won't let go. Please, let go. Put this city first, let's get this city rolling. You know, last Friday, we said goodbye to uh, Mayor Ridden and as I'm watching you all walk in, I'm thinking, who am I gonna blame for what this city is like today? I wanted to blame Garcetti, even Vergosa. And I said, and I looked and I said, wait a minute, I'm as, as much at fault as anybody else. So we all have to take the blame and you people have to lead us out of this. But please, Mr. De, uh, De Leon, I wish I could support you, but please, for the city.
K D L is Kevin De Leon. It's his nickname. It's just his initials. They call him by K D L instead of having to say his whole name, dude, he's got a dog with him.
Please be quiet while you're leaving.
I'm sorry, if you could just wait one minute, Mr. Herman is continuing to disrupt the meeting after he's been ordered removed under Council Rule Twelve. He will be subject to Council Rule Seven as well. Mr. Herman, leave immediately and silently.
Of course he didn't sell his fifty guns, Seal, but it's a good thing you remember, see, you're listening, Seal, I like that.
Hi Laura, but you're not gonna arrest him like you arrested my friend for the same exact thing.
Thanks, Sal, it's good to see you.
Despicable. I'm Laura, um, council members, like, the whole entire meeting, I don't actually see you looking up here. You're on your phones, you're talking amongst each other. What are we paying you for?
Nothing, nothing.
I mean,
Nothing.
Seriously, hi Mr. Cut. It's good to see you again.
It's never good to see any of them.
It's actually painful to know that these are the people that represent us. Our taxpayer money will ultimately fund the robot dog if you guys let it, let it through.
There's Mr. Harland rolling in.
Just like, just like it's happened with the drones and other gifts from the LA Police Foundation.
There's Mr. Harland right there, he owns everything.
It's just gonna continue to fuck us up. Our money needs to go to housing, healthcare, and education, not in your pocketbook.
Thank you very much, next speaker, please.
Yeah, people, normal people show up, Matt. There's a lot of cuckoos who have nothing else to do also though, to be honest. Begin.
Begin.
Yeah, general public comment, we're clear on that one minute? Yeah, okay, thanks. Uh, this morning, the World Health Organization ended the global emergency over COVID nineteen. Uh, on Monday, President Joe Biden announced that vaccine mandates for international travelers and the overwhelming majority of federal workers would be dropped. And yet yesterday, LA Fire Department Engineer Matt Mamon was terminated for refusal to comply with the city's vaccine mandate.
Hmm.
Uh, Mr. McCosker, on April fourteenth, Los Angeles Daily News published uh, an article with the headline, "LA City Council Member McCosker Seeks to Address City Staffing Gaps." Do you understand the definition of irony, sir? Because you have said nothing in opposition to the mandates despite the fact that the mandates are a major reason why the city has developed a twenty-one percent net staffing deficit. Council members Soto Martinez, Hernandez, and uh, Ramon, you have not stood up for labor rights by opposing the mandates despite alleging to be progressives. We are losing life-saving firefighters because of this stupid, illegal, unconstitutional policy. End the fucking mandates and rehire all terminated employees with that play. And K D L, quit looking at me with your mouth open like that, you look so fucking stupid.
Next speaker, please.
Get it, there's a motherfucker who's smart, Matt.
Sit down and be silent so we can take the next speaker.
That's some real shit right there.
Good morning.
Remember, you're free if you bend over.
My name is Lewis and I'm a resident of,
You'll be free if you bend over.
I want to speak on an issue that I'm very passionate about and that is electoral reform. There is a crisis in this city based on the c, culture of corruption that's infected the city council and we mu, the, one of the s, sorry, I have a s, stutter, sorry. Sorry.
It's okay, take your time, sir.
There is a crisis in this city and the simplest way we can do is drastic electoral reform in this city. That begins following the lead of cities like San Francisco and Oakland and in implementing ranked choice voting for all elections. And following the lead of cities like Portland, Oregon and Portland, Maine moving to a system proportional.
Great job.
Ranked choice voting that will allow voters to better elect representatives that better represent their interests than this current city council.
Thank you. Yeah, Portland's doing fantastic, that was a great example. It's a great example. Let's do exactly what Portland and, and San Francisco are doing, let's exactly do that. They're doing so great there. Who runs those cities, by the way?
I've been a member of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council for fourteen years. And even though we've had two previous council members elected to the sixth district, we've never felt represented. Their agendas were not Van Nuys agendas. Now, here I stand before you and had to plead with Mr. Krikorian's office to help Saint Elizabeth with their food pantry. I basically have begged for this council and Mr. Krikorian's office to ask for, to ask this question. Valley Food Bank, why did you state that you wouldn't separate Saint Elizabeth's pantry because it's a Catholic organization?
Is his arm getting heavy yet?
Please, don't come here to the council and plead for people who are thousands of miles away from, from us and ignore the needs of the poor of our city. Shame on you, Valley Food Bank.
I think he's trying to show his solidarity, but at some point even his little arm is gonna get fucking heavy.
And I'm gonna call a few more names, uh, I previously called Cat Lego, uh, Stacy Cigar Bollinger,
Please, Mr. Harland.
Susan Price, and a hundred thousand vacancies.
And a hundred thousand vacancies, oh, he said it!
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
He said, oh, he said it!
I'm here due to a Los Angeles City Ordinance that won't allow me as an independent contractor to work at the seventy-two Los Angeles Public Branch Libraries without showing vaccine status, being fully vaxxed, and not being able to give my First Amendment right to present a religious or medical exemption, which is discriminatory.
Shows the papers.
As of May first, twenty twenty-three, the sitting US President lifted across the nation all COVID and vaccine mandates for all government employees and all that work in government institu, institu, institutions. The LA City Ordinance should be moot subject and should already have been lifted, especially after May first. This needs to be on the agenda to be lifted stat. I'm a billboard charting, award-winning recording artist for kids and families who performed for over eight years for all LA Public Libraries year after year prior to lockdown, who performed virtual shows in twenty twenty and twenty-one,
She performed at public libraries?
And at LA Public Libraries in twenty-two in the summer, last summer. But here in twenty twenty-three was not allowed to be booked due to this Los Angeles City Ordinance. So I hope that gets on the agenda very soon so I can have a livelihood again.
Guys, she's got a full library tour coming up, so you could see her at your local library? She's an award-winning artist in her own mind?
Hi, guess I'll take my minute.
From one singer to the ucs, for the next.
There's no realistic possibility that you can effectively continue to serve the people of your district as a member of the council. There's no realistic possibility that you can effective legislate as a member of this body, unquote. Paul Krikorian, you said that about Kevin De Leon a really long time ago and you're sighing like you don't want me to bring it up. Thank you. Thank you. Kevin is a racist, this you can't deny.
Nope.
We are tired of asking you to force him to resign.
Fast five.
You are all complicit and you tell us lies.
That's true.
We won't be forgetting you ignored all our cries.
That's right.
Kevin De Leon, fucking resign, it's way past time for you to resign. Please fucking resign.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Here we go, thousand fucking vacancies, oh, Mr. Harland's coming up next. Yes.
Oh, I didn't start my time yet though, hold up.
Yes.
Well, I want to draw attention to the antisemitic flyer that Paul Krikorian brought up uh, recently. Um, because he left out an important detail. It said Azerbaijan, Turkey, Pakistan, and in the biggest letters, Israel, equals four brothers that will wipe Armenia off the map. That's why he didn't want to read the flyer, because it makes Israel look like a fucking terrorist state that it is. Um, now, I, I want to come to give you guys a cautionary tale warning, to listen to the reasonable people that come here all the time. Because if you don't listen to the reasonable people that come here, you'll have to obey the unreasonable people that end up dealing with you the way they want to deal with you in ways that we can't comprehend. So when your baby's brains are being bashed across the backstreets, where your smug grins be there, when the unreasonable people draw you out of your homes and give you street justice? Listen to the reasonable people here, like us, that are calling for civil action to take place and not violence. Otherwise, you will be at the whims of unreasonable violent people.
Thank you, next, next speaker, please, and I'd also like to call Rachel Sim and, go ahead, Mr. Harland, come on up. Um, and I've called now all the names that have signed up.
Hi, I'm Donald Harland, I'd like to speak on uh, gen items one, two, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and general comment.
Mr. Harland, uh, we're only taking general public comment today, so if you could please reset his clock for one minute? Go ahead with general public comments, sir.
Uh, I noticed uh, Karen Bass was uh, issuing illegal real estate the other day at the uh, VA, illegal VA uh, uh, hospital over there by the freeway. Uh, that uh, she brought out a bunch of fake congresspeople. Uh, yeah, Karen Bass needs to stop bringing out fake congresspeople who have been out of office for ten years to say that they're officials for the government and they have all this, all this stuff's theirs. That's so ridiculous what the mayor is doing. Um, I reject the LAPD donations of a vehicle. Uh, agenda item number twelve, no, that's one of my properties. The city doesn't own that. Number fifteen, there's a fake address. Yeah, there's, there's no uh, parcel report for that. Number sixteen, uh, that one's no good, they changed it in two thousand five. About the billboards and the city properties, some of the billboards are fair game and some of them aren't even city.
Thank you, Mr. Harland, thank you very much.
Okay, last call for, You imagine coming across the city for an hour, whatever, parking your car, getting in a bus, walking all the way over here to do that for one minute?
Then next to,
And then leaving? Could you imagine that being in your life? And doing that three times a week?
Let's go ahead and take first caller, please.
Wow, crazy dude.
First caller, please go ahead.
First caller, see, she's back, where's she at?
Hello, it's Eric Previn, I'd like to give a general comment on,
Shout out to Eric Previn.
Please go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Which items are open for,
It's just general public comment today, Mr. Previn, so you have a minute, please begin.
He has a boner for Eric Previn.
It's general public comment, but there's over twenty-six items on the agenda. Well, this is yet another example of the city council of Los Angeles having lost its way. It's very, very shameful and I hope that the progressive flank um, who are in the room understand that by denying,
Good luck with that.
Virtual access to committee meetings, you do a great disservice, number one. Number two, it also preempts comments on those items that were open but not to virtual testimony in committee from those items being addressed in council. That's why Fable says, oh, that's not, you can't address it in general. Well, there's only sixty seconds of general, which is, as you heard today, sixty seconds less than it used to be. These draconian measures are ill-advised, are illegal. Scott Marcus, the city attorney knows that David Michelson, who's sitting in the mayor's office, hopefully nervous, because we are gonna do something.
I'd be real, I can't.
You have to take the people seriously, folks. It's what we're about, this is the public's meeting, it's not the city council's meeting, okay?
That's right, that's right.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
They waste fifty-five fucking minutes, you should have told them that.
Caller, please go ahead.
Fifty-five fucking minutes we wasted with all the other bullshit and you can't give us more than a minute.
Yes, I want to speak to the city council and the rest of the city.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, you'll have one minute, go ahead.
Yes, LAPD had an uns sworn person in chamber saying that LAPD is double dipping by getting overtime. So if you retire and then you come back in thirty days and you get three times your salary, yeah, you're gonna go for that. And this city council person, or excuse me, the person that works for LAPD says that they are on part-time status because they are doing their work. Now, again, we go back to why was there a bill for Pacoima City Council Office from LAPD when city council of, of Pacoima was not open? Monica Rodriguez brought that up. I, Mr. Perez should be looking into the inquiry for all receipts for LAPD. Are they doing what they're saying they're doing? And why are we giving them three times their salary to return when we have people ready to do that work?
Thank you. Thank you very much, next caller, please.
What's up, Mike?
Next caller, please go ahead.
What's up, Berkey? You missed too too much.
Go right ahead, you have one minute, yes, please, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sit down, shut up, never mind that we're corrupt. No items available to speak on in the agenda. Typical petty pink face corrupt Armenian dictator Paul Krikorian evicting the public and inflicting all these stupid, ridiculous brown act violation clown presentations by council members on the public. No, we don't want your damn robot dog, we will not stand for it. Boycott Hyundai, public Hyundai owns General Dynamics. That's, they're starting to re, uh, to receive letters already. And not just the robot dog to oppress the, the, the public, but on this agenda, three, four, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, over four million dollars for the LAPD. This is the corrupt, incompetent homeless, eighty thousand homeless generating sleazy council hiding things
Thank you, next caller, please.
I love the brown act.
Next caller, please begin.
Hello?
Please begin.
Good morning, councilman, my name is Salvador Vasquez, this is general comment. I am the director of sales for the Fort Care by Marriott Woodland Hills located on Maturo Boulevard and part of the Warner Center community. I'd like to address the homeless camps along the backside of the hotel on Clarendon Street and Sagda Hotel on Alhama Drive. Our hotel, along with neighboring businesses, are growing increasingly impacted by these homeless camps and their individuals. We have experienced, We have experienced loss of employees, guests, and businesses because of the run-ins they've had experienced with the camp's individuals. Our most recent airline account was lost because of the safety concerns. Flight crews, especially female crews, do not feel safe in the area and have been approached for money and other items around the property and surrounding businesses. This accounts for a 92,000 revenue, revenue loss for the hotel, and we have another airline considering pulling their crews. In total, this accounts for a yearly quarter of a million dollar revenue loss for the hotel in which we'll subsequently lose out on occupancy tax for the city. We have seen fires, drug activity, and assaults in the area, and we need, we need help, we need help in the city. I urge you to vote yes on 23-4118 next week.
Busy cleaning his hands and, hi, Jocelyn, hi, Emily.
Next caller, please.
Caller, please go ahead.
Don't spam Ferrari.
Morning, Fable, it's Rob Klon. First, fuck your robot dog, but more importantly, let us not allow that to distract us from another item. Just last month, you said you couldn't muster up $8 million for a special election in CD10, and yet you're quietly rubber stamping a plan to spend 14 million to incentivize LAPD hiring. And on both items, our quote-unquote progressives said not a single word about it.
Fucking J.
I'd like to remind you of something the late, great Eddie H. of L.A. can used to say. Silence is the language of defeat. You may view those items as small potatoes, but where have you been on the big media issues? You sat silently in rubber stamp passes law enforcement appointees to the police commission, you did the same and allowed Chief Moore to be reappointed without even calling for the item to be heard, and now Heidi, in the name of the city of Los Angeles in this council is saying that posting public info about cops is a threat to national security. What an absolute clown show. How dare you silently sit there as we adopt absurd legal arguments that should have died with George Bush's war on terrorists?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with the fellow in the back of the room, please not shout out. Next caller, please.
I wish I could hear what he was saying.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, we can't have shouting out, we're hearing from members of the public right now.
In fact, shout out to the fella in the back of the room.
No, you, you need to be quiet in the council chambers. Next caller, please.
No, you need to be quiet.
Caller, please go ahead.
Hi.
Caller?
Yeah, my name is Ryan, I'd like to make a general comment.
Go ahead.
All right, so I'm calling in in regards to the robot dog. Like many other people that have already voiced their opinion, I think that this is ridiculous. As we've seen, LAPD has consistently accepted gifts that lead to huge amounts of money being spent by the city of Los Angeles, and the fact that this is a robotic dog doesn't speak much to your progressive policies, even when it comes to environmentalism. Seeing this ghost using so many different materials, it'll take up so much data space and energy costs, and it's really not in the public's best interest, especially because of the way that it functions overall. I'm a data scientist, and worked with algorithms that are used in facial recognition, and this is biased software. This is going to hurt the community, this is going to hurt the people, and this is going to make you guys look even worse than you already do. So please do not do this.
Tony, I use the stock cap.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Yippee-ki-yay, what up?
Next caller, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, this is Brock Landers, private investigator, thank you for having me. I would like to start by saying that I am all for the robot dog, that when the canines come out and we're watching on smoke and scan, everybody perks up, they're a lot of fun, even Stinks gets into it a little bit more. For the data scientists that just spoke, I'd like you to address your hypocrisy with that you helped design the software and then you're now saying it shouldn't be used by the cops. I think that's awful. For everybody in the room, for Karen in Beverly Hills, I'd like to throw out a couple numbers for you, 93, 432, and 157. 93 men, black men between the ages of 13 and 54 have been shot and killed in Chicago in the last four months and five days. 432 black men between the ages of 13 and 54 were shot and killed in Chicago last year. Since 2015, 157 unarmed black men have been killed by cops. Now, I want you to see, how many people can you name, black men can you name that were killed by cops? And then how many of those from Chicago?
Thank you.
Oh, and he was getting them, shout out to him.
Next caller, please go ahead.
Yeah, shout out to Brock Landers. Any guys, time?
Caller with the last four digits, 6818, he's pressed R6 to unmute.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yeah, loud and clear, so please begin.
Hi, I'd like to speak on about the, the robot dog and general public comment, please.
So there's only general public comment today, so we'll, we'll set the clock for a minute, so please begin.
Off the robot dogs, that's Ed 209.
Okay, thank you. Now, I, I'm going to have to say, yes, I am in support of the robot dog. It's better, it's better to have the robot dogs versus to have a regular dog that can bite the suspect, cause bite injuries or something. It's better, the robot dogs are better than having the physical cops trying to confront the suspect, because the robot dogs are not armed. And I'm sick and tired of people complaining and saying that the robot dogs, it's racist, it's, it's, it's bringing, bringing, brought into the black community, that's just a bunch of nonsense, you know? And drones are good technology, because you get to, you get to see the suspect without putting your life on the line, and that, a lot of people don't even understand that. And so I'm going to have to say, yes, the robot dogs are good, and I'm going to say, yes, we bring in the robot dogs, and this will probably help reduce.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please go ahead.
That's what you'll be hearing.
Caller with the last
Hello?
Whoa.
Hi, you have, yes, we can hear you, you have a minute for general public comment, please begin.
Yeah, first, I'd like to say that was a great presentation and performance by delegation brought in, but the wrong person to lead the presentation, Kevin DeLeón, as everyone else has been saying, and the community has been saying, and the city of Los Angeles has been saying, President of the United States has been saying, we don't want Kevin fucking DeLeón in office, we don't fucking want city council members like Tracis Parks and Kevin
Racist.
hypocrites. Excuse me, I was going to say DeLeón, but same, same shit. Paul Krikorian co-signing his damn measures, we don't want a stupid robot dog, we want things that will actually help the community in Los Angeles, the most marginalized people of Los Angeles, and y'all are not doing that. Start fucking listening to the people, or as the other caller said, there's going to be more problems as you keep seeing throughout the city, so start listening, for the love of God, y'all are not helping, y'all are making things worse. And Paul Krikorian, eat shit. Have a good day.
Paul Krikorian eats some shit, here's a sandwich for you, take a big bite.
Next caller, please go ahead.
Yeah, to turn it down, he was so loud, some people are just all up on it, you know? They got a, you know, big baritone ass voice.
Caller, please go ahead.
And some people are
I want to address new risks regarding the business of youth sports and the 2028 game related to the appointment of wreck and park
This shit is taped.
Commissioner Renata Simrel, president and CEO of the LA 84 Foundation. I've known Renata for many years, and while I consider her a good friend and greatly admire her passion, it gives me no pleasure to share concerning reporting by the Daily Beast. Under Ms. Simrel, the LA 84 Foundation repeatedly donated less than its legally required annual threshold for nonprofits, while at the same time investing $22 million into controversial private equity giant Blackstone. That $22 million was ostensibly for youth sports, just like the $18 million in the motion in front of you today. Until Commissioner Simrel agrees to recuse herself from all votes related to youth sports in LA 28, vote no on item nine, thank you.
Good old robot and shit, dude.
Thank you.
That are alive, you are coming with me.
Next caller, please go ahead.
Thanks for the taped fucking message. Message? Message?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you, please just go ahead, you have a minute.
Okay, thank you.
It's Mary Ann.
13th office sent out emails to probably thousands of people that there'd be no phone and public comment to the Hollywood Community Plan and had the opportunity to correct that misinformation, never did, I think there must be some sort of a violation there. Congratulations, you all supported the developer demands for mega upzoning in the regional center in the Hollywood Community Plan in spite of the feasibility study confirming that that would prohibit affordable being built. You are, you are still contributing to the worst homeless and affordable crisis in the country. Councilmember Yugo, you've been duped, you need better advisors, and I think it's illegal to make changes in a plan after it's passed. Thank you.
Shout out to Mary Ann from Howard Stern Show.
Next caller, please.
Next caller, please go ahead.
No, 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 no.
Next caller. Next caller.
Ah.
Next caller, please go ahead.
They got him right away. Damn, they dumped him.
Public comment?
Yes, you have a minute, please begin.
Not only is this council anti-Los Angeles, it is also anti-Latino. We live in the richest state, but look at our streets, all this with high taxes. Latinos are the majority. How is it possible that a minority governs the majority unless there is not discrimination and a corruption of democracy? Whoever does not respect our duly elected leaders disrespect all 1.8 million Latinos in Los Angeles. We have been dealing with this struggle for over 500 years. Only evil will lock arms to divide and oppress Latino majority. We will not break, we will not yield, we will never give in, we will never give up, we will never, ever back down. As long as we are confident and united, the tyrants we are fighting will not stand a chance. We have been chosen, and we only kneel to God and God alone.
He is chosen, you got choices.
Next caller, please.
No more callers in the queue.
All right, that'll post public comment for this meeting. Madam Clerk, what's next on the agenda?
Aw, man, is that it?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, posted and referred.
Fuckers, not going to take any more on the phones.
Very good. Members, are there any announcements? Do we have any announcements on my left?
Any fucking bastards, man.
Any announcements on my right? All right, do we have any motions for adjournment? Councilmember McCosker, if we could all please rise for adjournments.
Look at that shit, so, hold on a second. Okay, so, we did, we did 55 minutes.
Today, I rise to adjourn.
We did 55 minutes of bullshit, okay? Now I'm looking at the clock, right? So we did 46 minutes of actual, like, talking to the public and handling the public. And now, we're doing adjournments of honoring, you know, as they always do, somebody who's passed away that was, you know, prevalent with the city. You know what I mean? It's wild, just wild. So they show up, fuck around for an hour, give you less time than an hour, then, then cock around for another 10, 20 minutes right now, or if that, then that's it. Yeah, no goat, boy. There was a few that we didn't hear either. I like hearing from the, the lady who, who gets raped in her sleep by Obama. It's, it's interesting that she never wakes up. I mean, you must be a heavy sleeper. And then I say to you, if you're such a heavy sleeper, then how did you even know that it happened? And then how do you know it was Obama? So I'm guessing that you kind of like open one eye, like, oh, damn, he's hitting the guts, I'm going to pretend to go to bed right now. I'm asleep. Oh, yeah, I'm asleep. He was liking it. I'm just trying to figure it out, there's so many questions, I'm just, you know, there's so many questions I have, you know? I have other questions for like Mr. Harland, how does he own so many properties? You know, he owns everything, you know? Just want to be like him. He's a real estate mogul. You know, he owns the, the port of Los Angeles, he owns, you know, the strip on Hollywood, Hollywood Boulevard, he owns a lot of places, man, he's ballin', shout out to him. Yeah, there's a lot of good ones out here today. See what these idiots are talking about.
That was in 1972. I remember him coming to my parents' living room and talking about that race.
Of course he did, I remember, me, me, me.
He is survived by his beloved wife of 71 years, Irene. Daughters Magella and Lorette.
Magella?
Grandchildren Christopher.
Name's her kid Magella.
Lexandrina, Lexi, and Brenda, and 12 great-grandchildren.
Magella?
Arden, a lasting difference in the community. He was a neighbor just a couple doors down from me, and quite recently, before I took this seat, I sat with him, and he gave me a great deal of advice. He reminded me to never, never, ever forget where I come from, never forget the community, never forget to stick up for those folks who can't stick up for themselves. He was a great, great, great man, I'll miss him dearly.
Like you stick up for the general public?
Thank you, rest in peace.
You don't ever stick up for them, those are the people that got you there, that voted you in. You don't ever stick up for them when they're just trying to talk. How come you don't ever stick up for them and they're living?
Colleagues, I rise to adjourn in memory
Oh, the racist is here.
of Romelia Lopez Romero, known to family friends as Romi.
Romi?
She was born on May 7, 1922 in Los Angeles, the third to four children, and the only daughter of Juan and Consuelo Lopez. She lived to the age of 100. Romi was born and raised in the diverse Ball Heights neighborhood where she attended St. Mary's Catholic School and Roosevelt High School.
Nah, look at the picture, that's great.
Romi married fellow native Angelino
No sidewalk.
Albert Márquez Romero on November 26, 1949 at St. Mary's Catholic Church in Ball Heights. The couple had two daughters, Lorraine Teresa Romero, born April 28, 1952, followed by Elaine Judy Romero, born on October 16, 1955. Romi gave birth to both of her girls
Oh, that's Bill, I wonder if Bill's grabbing her ass?
in Ball Heights. After 19 years of marriage
Bill Gooster in that pic, I know it.
Albert passed her husband at the young, very young age of 42. Romi, now a single mother of two young girls, went to work for the county of Los Angeles
Oh, yeah, he was Hong Kong.
starting out as a clerk and ending her career as a child support investigator.
She feels better than Hillary's pancake ass.
She was also able to put her daughters through Catholic school, to help support her parents and pay off two mortgages, all on her very own.
He did, he got a handful of that beat.
Cecilia Vanessa Cabello, many folks know her, was born on March 7, 1974.
I swear I didn't get it.
Also at White Memorial Hospital in Ball Heights.
Sure, Bill, swore last time, found out that I worked out for him.
As well as was the campaign director for one of the presidential candidates who's now the secretary of transportation under President Joseph Biden. The apple of her eye, Romi was a pivotal figure in her granddaughter's life, teaching her strength, perseverance, resilience, kindness, generosity, and unwittingly feminism.
Yeah, Homer's waiting for the flood on them joints, look at that shit, Bill, why don't you just wear shorts?
Romi was a second mother.
Should have just worn shorts instead, I mean, they're almost.
She always made visitors feel welcome in her home.
I mean, bro, I could almost see kneecap, homie.
Extended the utmost hospitality, along with a sympathetic, sympathetic
Man, them joints was waiting for the flood.
Friend, loyal, and loving, and someone who always could be counted on through good times, but especially
Some Capri pants.
in bad times. Though she was headstrong and stubborn
The original Capris.
She really held a grudge, but she didn't
Is that where the ladies got it from? They seen that pic, like, oh, maybe that'll work for us.
Romi was whip smart
You don't got hairy legs, we're going to look good.
and very good with finances. She enjoyed a very comfortable retirement after 24 years at the county of Los Angeles, and up until the very end, Romi was sharp, never losing a scintilla of her mental acuteness and awareness. She passed away again at
Culatas?
a very young age, today's day and age, of 100. Romi Romero survived by her granddaughters, Lorraine Romero and
Crimes on, yeah, I know, I'm fashion copying them right now, bullying them over. Bro, look at the tie, too, that shit looks like a thin belt, bro. Look at the, look at the tie he's wearing, shit looks like he's wearing his, his belt around his neck, like a thin one.
Thank you.
Like one of them thin ass belts.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeón, I'd like to join you
Dude, I'm just staring at him right now, he looks great in that picture.
I know what an incredible influence she was to Cecilia
Fucking majestic.
Cecilia. She's, she was Cecilia's world.
Hey, bro, when the flood comes, he's gonna be the smart one, okay?
She was a very strong influence in her life.
He goes bowden, he's the smart one.
And I know how devastating it was to both she and her family, may she rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other adjournments?
Any more adjournments on the left?
On the right?
Look at him, thinks he's like Pat Sajak.
Uh, like to ask that we.
It's a pretty nice suit there, I bought.
In memory of a beloved.
I do like the tie.
Father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, and, uh, a beloved leader and really hero of the Armenian community.
Oh, here we go.
Dr. Vartgas Najarian, who passed away on Saturday, April fifteenth. Um, he is the father of Adan Najarian, who many of you know and, and have worked with. Uh, Vartgas Najarian was born in April of nineteen thirty in Keshab, Syria.
So I'm saying, Randy, we bought him a nice one.
In Beirut, where he attended the American University of Beirut.
That shit wasn't from the men's warehouse.
Went to medical school there, graduating in nineteen fifty-seven. In nineteen fifty-eight, uh, he came to the uni, well, in nineteen fifty-seven, he came to the United States.
Didn't know he had his own ties.
Uh, to continue his medical training and just a year later.
It's a nice tie, whoever's tie it is.
Uh, a beautiful young nurse.
I like it anyways.
Who he married. And, uh, they went on to, uh, named Mary Kevorkian, and they went on to raise, uh, a beautiful family, uh, in Cleveland, Ohio, before moving to California in nineteen eighty. Uh, the family, um, moved here in nineteen eighty, he started his private, private orthopedic practice here.
This is true, Jim.
And then, uh, shortly thereafter, he took his first visit to what was then Soviet Armenia in nineteen eighty-four.
The man.
Um, and found that the Soviet medical system there was a disaster. And he soon went about the work of changing that.
Oh, I didn't even know, Andrew M.
Fundamental, really, to changing the medical system in the entire country of Armenia. He was the first doctor in the entire Soviet Union to perform arthroscopic surgery.
Clothing is tough, man, I've had a lot of friends that have actually owned clothing, it's a tough deal, dude.
Uh, significant amount of arthroscopic surgical equipment there, and brought Armenian orthopedic surgeons to the United States for training. Uh, in addition to the orthopedics, Dr. Najarian helped develop modern eye care in Yerevan.
But are they bad, Vinny, cause you don't like the man, are they bad, cause they don't look nice?
So he actually created the first aspirin factory in Yerevan. And when the nineteen eighty-eight earthquake devastated Armenia, Dr. Najarian was asked to be on the first United States State Department Emergency Medical Response Team.
Uh-oh, somebody's getting popped in, there's a caller.
That was the first time since the start of the Cold War that a US military plane was permitted to land in the Soviet Union. He established a humanitarian organization called Medical Outreach for Armenians to facilitate, uh, his many charitable endeavors, endeavors which he engaged in with his wife, Mary. And with the help of the Armenian community.
Kinda, Todd.
Dr. Najarian and Mary Najarian arranged for a hundred and twenty children who had lost limbs in that earthquake to obtain prosthetics and necessary surgical treatment, uh, in Los Angeles before, uh, returning home.
Well, I think it's, look.
He sent millions of dollars of medical supply.
I don't think it's the healthcare system that's bad in a sense, what it is, is, oh, what the fuck, how did I pause it? Oh, sorry about that, cause I meant to, not that it matters, but I meant to just, uh, uh, do that. Um, no, I think it's just the fact that, Red, that you gotta remember, most hospitals are privately owned, okay? So, they can charge you whatever they want, ninety bucks for a fucking aspirin. That's the problem right there, it's not actually having bad healthcare, like being, the, the, the care itself is what I'm saying. For the most part, isn't bad, I mean, you have, you know, medical anomalies that happen every once in a while, of course, nobody's perfect. Things happen, okay? I can tell you firsthand, it, it does happen, okay? But it, it, you know, again, and that's also, it's like, um, you know, the more you do, like, you know, some people go their whole lives without having any kind of procedures. Someone might have seven surgeries to correct one thing, you know what I mean? So, the more you have, the, you know, more susceptible you are to, to having, uh, some sort of, you know, bad thing happen. Is there malpractice that happens too? Absolutely, there's unscrupulous doctors. Like I always tell you, when we go up, when people shit on the cops, I always say, there's always bad and good of everybody. You got great doctors who really actually wanna help you, and that's why they're there. And then there's ones that don't give a fuck and push the drugs, cause they get paid by the far, big pharma. You know what I mean? Or the ones that touch women, they're fucking gynecologists or whatever. You know, that's happened a few times in the, uh, in the, uh, news in the last few years. One in fucking a very prominent school out here. Okay, so there's lots of types, but there's some that, there's gotta be some good, otherwise the industry wouldn't, wouldn't work at all. So, need to look at it like that, you know? Like I always say, there's a painter, you hire a painter, this motherfucker's painting the windows, the cabinets. You're like, wait a minute, I paid you to paint the walls, not the cabinets, not the window and everything else. Cause he was too lazy to fucking tape up or whatever, you know what I mean? Not professional, you understand? So there's no difference when it comes to a cop or a teacher, okay? There's teachers that actually go to school and teach the kids the curriculum that they were hired to teach. They're a science teacher, they teach science. Now you have some teachers out there that make it, their whole, um, their whole focus, in a sense, to make sure that the kids understand who they are as a person and who they identify as. Okay, which shouldn't matter to anybody or anybody, a, a, anything. Who your teacher is, whether it's a male or female, gay, straight, bisexual, Jewish, Catholic, Christian, Buddhist, none of that should ever fucking matter. And none of it is your business, and nor should the teacher make it the kid's business, cause that's not the school's business. Okay? You're there to teach them whatever you were hired to teach them. You weren't there to teach them your life. Your life is insignificant in that matter, I hate to break that one to you. You're not special, you're there to teach them and not to teach them what you want to teach them, what you were there to be brought in to be teaching them. Okay, not your own curriculum. Some old, some old shit that you popped out of your brain, okay? And that's what I'm saying. And that's how the way I works it. And that's what you got, ladies and gentlemen. And I had, I have to put that up there in that sense, because it's very relevant, you know? And that's the world we live in. So don't shit on everybody as a whole, you really gotta pick them apart. And the fucked up part about everything really is, is that in this so happy day and age, um, you really have to wait for this teacher, this painter, this cop to be fucked up in order to sue them. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, to, to, um, uh, to get rid of them, to fire them. Because if not, then you're profiling them somehow because of their age, or their race, or their gender, or whatever the fuck it is. And then they end up getting four million dollars for the rest of their life. They take their money, go live somewhere else, like, like a nice king or queen. And we, as the taxpayers, pay for it. And it's fucked up, and that's the cycle that happens, you know what I mean? It's bullshit, but that's what works.
South Santa Fe Avenue, at the, is a kind of activation, code three, enter one nine one three, correction, one nine three three, already thirteen nine nine, doing in a ten, nine, three.
So that's the fucked up part.
Unit, battery suspect, six, two, seven, six, church street, code two incident, two one nine three, for already eleven twenty-eight.
Well, Jimbo, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it depends on, I think, where you're going. I mean, again, if you're, if you have insurance, you know, and you go to a hospital that's taking your insurance, I mean, how are they really pro, how do they profile you in that sense?
Avenue, six, eight, three, four, Independence Avenue, apartment twenty-seven.
Some nice Benz.
Forty-three years, no shirt, gray shorts. Assistant eyes, code three, incident nineteen thirty-seven, already twenty-one fifty-seven.
It's a station wagon, right?
Four, the brand eight, suspect yellow.
You don't see too many station wagons, this fool's like, I ain't going around the corner.
Down, two, two, three, East Fifth Street, code two, incident one nine three nine, already one four.
I'm not going around the corner, I'm just gonna back up, oh wait. I hope nobody comes the other way. That's your whip, hold hand. It's clean little bends. Yeah. I wish they had, I wish they didn't have the porta potty right there, and they had the real pissers that you use, like in, in the red light district. So you guys could see the people pissing.
Two zero five zero, east side of the G Street. Suspect is a father, child, male, black, thirty-two years, medium build, gray and yellow, orange sweatshirt, IDG, wanted our comments, question, one nine four one, already eighteen forty-nine.
How about you can see the piss going on? Just remember my friends, I showed you the videotape of my friends videotaping me pissing in there. I mean, you gotta go, you gotta go, that's the whole point. Like, you know, you have so many places to drink and shit, and they don't want you, I guess they had a probably a problem of people pissing outside of the fucking establishments. So on the corners, they have those little, those little piss, you know, the little piss, uh, stalls. And you could kinda see through it, but you could definitely see the piss coming down. Cause there's a gap on the bottom.
One nine two four four nine investigation, sub four seven one five, Estelle Monte Avenue, is now code two, incident one three two five, already nine seventy-four.
But I believe the gap on the bottom is only so they can come by and clean it. Cause the way they clean is they come home with, like, they come by with like a fire hose, like a water truck with a fire hose attachment. And homie just fucking douches the fucking, the whole piss hole. Glad you're riding piss hole. So, yeah, cleans the piss hole like that. And that's that. Teresa, I am smoking out of an Illadelf, Illadelf bomb. I highly suggest them. They're a little pricey, but they're worth their money. Solid glass, won't need another. You know, hits great, cause, you know, what you need to realize is a forty dollar bong and a four hundred dollar bong, there is a difference, and it isn't just artwork. Function is a difference, glass thickness is a difference. So. Sometimes it's better to just plunk something down. I, I, I always suggest having some sort of vaporizer too, that's why I have the mighty. Cause that's the cleanest way to smoke, and they're pricey too, but it's good for you, it's on the go, it's good. Sounds disgusting, well, sassy, I mean, what can you do? You gotta piss, you gotta piss, I mean, it's natural. I just love how they designed them, because it's like a, it's like a, it's a little maze, a little metal maze. And it, and it shears, so you can kinda see through it, cause the guy has pinholes. And then the bottom, I don't know, twelve, sixteen inches from the bottom is, is, is open, so you can see your feet. You can see, that way, I guessing, so that way you can see somebody's in there? So you don't walk in there while they're in there, that's all I could think of. Damn, there goes the Benz again, that shit looks sweet. It's a nice station wagon, you don't see those out here too much. You know what I mean? And then you're, uh, you're pissing. No, don't do that, man, I'm surprised people think of those things, but it's wild. It's a nice Benz, yeah. He's the Amsterdam baller for sure. He's like, fuck your bike, fuck your scooter, I don't care how much it costs, I don't give a shit. Fucking, I, I got that. I got that, homie.
Hot Prowl, one, two, two.
Hot Prowl.
Two, four Chandler Boulevard, one, two, 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 four Chandler Boulevard, apartment seven. Second name information from alarm company.
Right, Rick?
Spoke to the PR, she stated she believes someone was in her residence. This no further, code three incident, one nine five nine, already fifteen forty-three.
Looks slick as fuck. You know what I mean, all Euroed out. Thing is, is they're still, um, like us, they're left-hand drive, you need to get that motherfucker in the UK instead of Europe. That way you're, you're driving on the left side. Oh, I'm sorry, right-hand drive. My bad. Right-hand drive. That way you get that same car, right-hand drive, and then you bring it here, and everyone's like, holy shit, that thing is clean. And then they see it's a right-hand drive, they're like, oh, fuck. What the fuck? The only problem with the right-hand drive cars is making left turns. You know, it's dangerous here, because you can't, sometimes you can't see around the other car that's trying to go the other way. And you can't, and you know, you turn and you're gonna get plowed, you're, you are hit, you're getting the door knocked. You know what I mean, you're getting T-bone, so. Yep, Jorge, I'll be live tonight.
Seventy-seven unit, forty-four suspects there now.
Petty theft.
From Mont Avenue, at the WSA, suspect number one, male, black, late forties, blue LA hat, black shirt, black shorts, number two, male, black, blue bandana over face, short, black shirt, black pants. Much comments, code two, incident one nine six five, already twelve thirty-nine.
Man. Why are they always stealing at the, at the shoe warehouse? What's at the shoe warehouse that fools love so much? I don't get it. Don't make no sense.
WSA units, it's smart. There's fifteen thirteen Livonia, one five one three Livonia, it's code three, incident one nine six seven, already five.
Um. It's not what I'm looking for, where is it? That's not, but that's, I wanna see. Um. There? Um.
Six, five, eight.
Oh, there it is.
Eighteen, five, eighteen, code thirty ringer, three, correction, three, two, seven, Lackney Avenue, the Lackney Warehouse, incident one nine six nine.
There's me pissing. My friend's videotaping me. See what I mean? So you could, you could totally like see through it.
Traffic hazard, sunset Beverly Glen, PR advisor, large tree is down, westbound sunset, right before Beverly Glen, coming out of a turn in the slow traffic lane, it's code two, incident one nine seven two, already eight oh six.
I don't know why I don't have the video, I can't find the video, I just have the shot of them fucking catching me pissing and, but that's what I'm saying. It's like, you know, the, it's a legit porta potty, and that's what I'm saying, like, you could totally see that somebody's in there, right? And the whole bottom, the whole bottom is open, so, yeah, good times. Let me saw this fool, check this shit out, real quick. Holy shit!
Sheesh!
Holy shit!
Unit, it's an ATW with firearm occurred approximately ten minutes ago from one, 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 two, seven Dennis Boulevard. Suspect fled in a vehicle, westbound, unknown year Honda CRV, four-door, blue, unknown license plate. Suspect is a male Hispanic, dark complexion, thirty-five years, five, seven, one, eighty, black bra. Wearing a white shirt, blue pants, white shoes, tattoo on the right side of his neck.
Things you see.
Hand, hands, uh, standing, no property taken, information, incident one eight seven four.
Yeah, they almost lost their Audi in the drink.
Eight-year-old Mal Armenian, black hoodie, black pants, suffers from bipolar, schizophrenic, assaultive, I don't remember at location, mostly under the influence of narcotics, was caught here, incident two thousand and ninety, sixteen ninety-one.
He ain't got gloves! Right, there you go. That's like a glove, alien. Ah, shit, yeah, dude, I wanna tell you, we were sitting there smoking weed. We were right outside of a coffee shop, we just got our joints all rolled up, enjoying some coffee, enjoying a joint. You know, it's kinda early morning, you know, noonish, and I'm like, dude, she's driving funny, I don't know, dude, she ain't gonna make it in there. She's gonna, you know, fucking Austin Powers in it, you know, I'm like, dude, she's not gonna make that, she's gonna go over the edge. Nah, she'll make it.
Yes, a male, twenty nineteen years, wearing a white long shirt over a blue, it's what shirt.
Oh!
Pants, man, for additional, code two, incident two thousand four, already nineteen ninety-four.
See, what the video didn't catch, obviously.
Unit, forty-nine, forty-nine, missing child, three, five, two, two Sheffield Avenue, three, five, two, two Sheffield Avenue, CPR grandmother, location. Subject, male, Hispanic, two years, long curly dark hair, red jacket, code three, incident two zero zero five, already four two nine.
Is everybody screaming, stop, stop, stop! And right after that video ends, you could see, she's still in the car there, in that video, that I'm sure, that I just showed you. So next thing you know, everybody's opens the hatch and like holds down the bumper and everything, like, I'm talking five, six dudes, so she could get out. So some dude gets in and he puts it in, uh, you know, neutral, and they just kinda pulled it back from the edge. You know what I mean? Little bit, and then he got it out of there, but thankfully didn't make it into the drink, but, yeah, dude, that would've been bad. Cause how do you get them out of there? They would've, you know, I mean, dude, she would've sunk to the bottom, I would think. The windows were closed, how would she, you know? Even if you said, okay, I wanna be Superman and go jump in there, which, by the way, that water's fucking filthy, I wanna let you know. It's like to where if you jumped in there or fell in there, you'd probably wanna go to the hospital and have your orifice, orifices cleaned out. Your ears and anything else, you know, eyes fucking dushed.
Station, you're almost in shag. CPR, male, white, red, black hat, gray hood, it's white shirt, black pants, suspect vehicles, a white GMC Yukon with dark tinted windows. Black is a five-teen Frank Zebra, three, six, three. Last seen driving north on Yarmouth, suspect is a male, is.
Where are you at, lobster?
Two, twenty fifteen, already ten.
Lobster, where are you at? Are you, um, are you, um, there's the cops right there, I guess. Look at, look at how nice the cop cars are. Fucking nice ass dope fucking Benz.
Police, go for Beverly Woods, that's just picture.
We get the old shitty Capris or the fucking Exploder, they get the Benzo. And, uh, fuck, in UK, dude, London, all those cop cars are fucking Beamers. Got Beamer, Beamer rides, not all of them, but most of them. Got Beamer, Beamer rides. Not all of them, but most of them. The highway patrolmen, for sure, the ones that I've seen have those, uh, station wagon fucking beamers. And I wanna say there's some that even use a WRX, Subarus. Fucking cops are hot right here, dog. Shit must be happening. I wanna see the cops pull somebody over here and be fresh. You should be. It's your birthday. Just don't eat too much cake. Give you a bellyache. Don't eat too much cake. Don't fall into that trap. There's so many traps in this world, you know, you go to the good Mexican restaurant, they give you those hot. Steaming tortilla chips with the salsa and you just can't deny it. You can't. Next thing you know, there's two baskets of chips gone and you can't finish your food. Or you go to the Italian joint's hot, fresh bread. Blocking the driveway, not letting nobody out. I'm gonna stab you. There's gotta be another exit. I guess they just, he's probably in the main one. It's a fresh ass bite. City is hot, man. Well, sun's going down, it's. Alright, Kent, have a good one. Oh shit, I was, what? I was in London in, um, twenty eighteen, I think it was. Had him then. I know that's five years ago, but. Had him then. At least is, I'm sure, uh, around that time. Chick with a screwdriver threatening people? That's it, that's it. She's ready, man. She's going off tonight. Go to sleep, crazy lady. I guess it's during the daytime right now, right? So. She ain't gonna go to bed. She'll chew you up. She's a man eater. I think it was the next one. Sorry guys, I lost something. I'm always losing shit in here, man. Damn it. Yeah, I lost it. Protest, protest over what? What are you talking about? Oh, you're talking about France? They've been going off. They've been going off for a month now. They're pissed at Macron. For raising, I think he raised the age for like social security or something like that, something, something, uh, something, uh, close to that. You gotta wait a few more years to get your shit. Oh, Damon, you see the new WWE title, man? I have not. Swat, I have not. Is it dope? Those belts are pretty cool. Big as fuck. But I mean, those men and women are, uh, they're large. They are large. Speaking of that, I need to put up a bunch of cards. I got a bunch of, uh, stuff that I just got. Some new wrestling cards and some new UFC shit that just came out that I got in the mail and some new baseball. WCW title with the WWE logo in the front. Hmm. That's interesting. That's interesting. So Matt's seen it apparently. I mean, they've done it for years, right, Aaron? I mean, since the French Revolution. Off with their heads. Retirement age being two years longer. Yeah, I saw us close, right? Isn't that it? Did I, what, what did I say? I said something about social security. I think that's what I said. I was close. Go Lakers, yeah, man. We'll see. They got smoked. They did the smoking and then they, then they got smoked. So they traded smoke shows, the teams did. Yeah, retirement is a thing of the past, I think, Oscar. The way the dollar's being devalued and the way they constantly look at devaluing it at every chance they can get and. Keeping people under their thumb and never once saying, huh, you're struggling. After forcing them to close their businesses to say, hmm, well, just, you know what? For one year, you don't have to pay taxes. Not once did they ever do that. Easily could've done that. That would spur the economy, cause then you go spend money. They didn't do that. What? So it sounds like we got us a fake cop with a, rolling around with a gun when, out of his window with LAPD markings on his shit. It's weird. That's weird. Well, that's true, right, Penny? Cause the way they spend is off our backs. We pay for their spending. They're foolish spending. So that's why they don't give a shit if they're spending ninety-seven bucks for a toilet seat. That they could've bought for thirteen bucks at Home Depot. And then they bought a bottom in bulk and got them for six. Instead, they bought them in bulk for ninety-seven. It's a strange van too. You see those Benz vans? Like, you don't never see that. What is that? Is that a Honda? The fuck is that? It's not a Honda. What, is that a Peugeot? Maybe it's a Peugeot. That's a Volvo for sure. What was the last one? Looked like a, maybe a Peugeot? Cars flying by, you better watch out. One in back is a Volvo for sure. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the one in front of the Volvo. Suzuki, I don't know. It, it had a little. I don't know if it was a Suzuki. I don't know if they're even making cars anymore. Cause Peugeot has that little like lion. Has the little lion. Uh-oh, the job for the old lady. Don't be killing the old lady. Oh, man, this is scary. This is scary. Oh, man. Hurry lady, hurry. Oh my God, this dude just blasted by the old lady. What a bunch of dicks. Y'all can't even slow down. Just blasted by that old lady. It's a Fiat? Oh, blasted by her, dude. Now she's in the street. We do it, old lady. Get in the fucking. Man, that she gave me a little anxiety, I ain't gonna lie. Blasted by her. She just sitting there. It's Andrew, what's his name? She's stoned. Everybody's ripped and in the damn, sir. I could be working out. Larry Tate. That was Larry Tate. What's this coming down the street, guys? Quick, tell me what it is in the chat. Volkswagen? Volkswagen? Look at the lights. That shit is weird. We don't have no Volkswagens like that here. The fuck is that? Fuck is that? It's a Volkswagen for sure. We don't have those. Dude with a shetty? No, that's definitely a Volkswagen. Just don't know the model. That's why I love do, going out there, like just looking at the cars. There's so much shit that you'd see out there in all these countries that we never see here. You know, Peugeot, Fiat, they're huge manufacturers out there. You know, you see a lot of stuff, things that you don't ever see. Same with Volkswagen. I told you about that Turok. If you think of the Chevy Avalanche or the Cadillac Escalade E X T, remember those cars? Or it's really a truck, right? That is a Volkswagen. They make a Volkswagen version of that called the, the Amarok. So if you look up Amarok, you'll see A M A R O K. Look that up and then you be like, see if you ever see one of those. Saw one in Scotland. But I was just videotaping and then dude comes out. He's like, what are you doing? It's my car. I was like, man, I'm from the States. Never seen anything like this. So I just started chatting. I was like, yeah, we didn't, we don't ever have no cars like this out here. And I get it. He sees some weirdo out there fucking around and walking his. You know, with their phone around his car. I get it. And I was smoking a joint. He's a veteran. It's okay. He's running around nude. That's twelve thirty-two. He's running around nude, but it's okay. He's a veteran. He's gonna end up in fucking, uh, Debo's pigeon coop. Been smoking that dust with fucking Smokey and, uh, what was homeboy's name? Hector. Hector make him smoke that PCP. Old Hector's ass. Hit it slow, Holmes. Hit it slow. I like the smoke, man. I've been smoking since I was two. Okay, okay. Alright, so I got a TC at McDonald's. Go over there. You know what's funny is if you look at the price of, um, like a, let's just say a Big Mac meal, right? Like the number one. So you get your Big Mac, fries and a Coke, okay? It's like fucking twelve dollars. Twelve bucks out the door with the tax here. Trespass? Oh shit, schools, school kids are rumbling. Twenty deep. So you can, look, your number one cost you fucking twelve bucks. Pretty shitty meal nowadays. You could say McDonald's has never really been all that great. But definitely worse as it, as it progresses, right? Then I say to you, look at the dog taking a shit over there. Holy shit. Look at the dog, look at the dog, look at the dog. Is he taking a shit? Oh my God, the dog's taking a duke. What the dog doing? Ah, he did. He took a shit. She just picked it up. Wish she picked the log up. Ah, he was taking a shit, Bill. Couldn't wait, right on the cobbles. He's like, ah, yeah, I feel ten pounds lighter. Clip it. You clip it, Pluto. That's too funny. At least she's a responsible dog owner and picked it up. I wanna say. Shout out to the dog for pooping on the stream. Ah, shit, yeah, man. Dog's awesome. I love it. I love it. Fucking dog comes over here, walks down the street, takes a dude. He seen Smokey's scum. He was like.
This sucks more than anything that I've ever sucked before.
That's why he took a shit. He straight shit on my stream. Don't shit on my stream, but you already done it. That's the second dog shit on my stream I've had. We had the, I just, I just remembered we were watching the end of that chase and he brought the canine out. And the canine just fucking is like, dude, I can't wait. I gotta go. You left me back there way too long and homeboy just left a coiler in the street. You could see big old fat coiler in the street, but the best part wasn't the dog leaving the coiler. The best part was the five officers that were around, all of a sudden just, I mean, like somebody threw a grenade. Just jumping back five, six feet and all I could say was they must've been downwind of that smell. That's it. The smell of the fresh. That's all it must've been. That dog's like, where, where are you guys going? What's going on? Where you guys going? See, what they should've done is have the canine go next to the assailant, the suspect's door and take the shit right there. Only but eh, I'm give up, man. Stop it. Just tell him to stop. Please. I mean, dude, I, I don't know if any of you guys were here that day, but that, I mean, dude, you could totally see it. They ran. They didn't walk lightly one by one. No, no, no. It was like somebody fucking threw a flashbang down or something, you know? Get back. Hold on guys, let me hit that drop against loud. I need to, let me, let me lower it, but I wanna hear it. Okay, let's see. Nope, it's still, did it not take? Damn, it's, it's really that loud. Fifteen decibels down. It's a little light. Hold on, let's go up a little back a little. Well, gamer dude, I think that's why they wanna do it, cause that way they don't have to feed them and they don't have to pick up after their dog shit. No coiler to have to pick up. I wonder if he picked the coiler up anyway. He's probably left it in the street. But yeah, no coilers to deal with, no dog farts. Oh, man, what is it like in a canine officer's fucking shit when a dog fart just goes up? Ah, he's back there. Ah, Jesus. Ah, he's back there. Ah, Jesus. Come on, trigger. You know, you're rushing to a scene. You haven't had time to take him out. You know, he's probably gotta take a deuce, but you gotta get there. You know what I mean? And then you hit a crazy bump because you're flying code three. And then you come down on that bump and he's like, oh, bubble good. Last one loose. Now you're stuck smelling that on the way there. The windows are down. Nothing like a dog fart in a car. Ah, I had a neighbor. They had a dog named Egley. And boy, I swear to God, he lived up to his name. Like he smelled like these eggy kind of farts and you put him in a car, boy, oh, boy. I mean, dude, it was just like, it was like he became allergic to the ride and his way of, you know, expressing himself was just a fart every four or five minutes. And it was just the best because it was quiet. You didn't even fucking hear it. It was just quiet and it stank so bad. It just smacked you across the face. It was like a cartoon. You know, the little, the smell that you saw in a cartoon, like they were cooking something. It was just like that. You're like just chilling, having a good time and bang. Ah, I remember it's next thing you know, you're rolling the windows down and you're just doing your best to get it out. Then you're laughing at it and then finally it clears out. The dog's looking at you like, what? Like what? What's going on? It's drafted here. Oh man, that was fucking hysterical. Ah, and then the best part is is that you'd finally clear it out. You put the windows back up and he'd do it again. He'd do it again. Ah, man, shout out to Eggly. He was a pit bull, by the way. Oh, man. And he was a, he was a vicious dog. This dude was, this dog was wild, man. It was too much, dude. Yeah, it was good, man. It just made me tear up. Sad part about it. Yeah, the sad part is they had to put him down. He was a vicious dog. He was really sweet with like kids. Kids didn't bite us, never. He's really um, just really good, you know? And uh, and he was a little gassy, but he was a good dog to be around. Never attacked us. Just always fun to be around, but other dogs, oh boy, he hated other dogs. Holy shit. Man, being held by three dudes. No JD, they had like a fence, right? Let me just turn this down for just a second. I tell it will, you know, they had like a fence that was, I don't know, five feet. Maybe a little higher, you know, wasn't super high, like six feet or whatever, about five, five feet. And it was ivy, you know, and it was like wrought iron, but covered in ivy. So you couldn't see through it. But the dog could like kind of peek through it when it needed to. And it could hear other dogs walking by or whatever. And I was across the street where I lived, like, I don't know, hundred feet. Okay, so all the time dogs even across the street, he'd peek his eyes through or snout through the wrought iron and the, you know, because the wrought iron had, you know, gaps through it and he could look and see, okay, well, there's a dog out there and, you know, bark back or whatever. And for, I don't know what it was, dude, one day the dog just fucking snapped two times. So I should say for whatever times, two times. It literally like a horse. You know, like an equestrian horse jumped over that five foot fence and straight cleared it. And I mean, cleared it, didn't hit the top and then kind of work its way over. No. It cleared the top, bolted across the street in front of my house and grabbed a dog by its hind leg and ripped it out of its socket. And it was a little like um, I don't know, little Shih Tzu or something like that. I'm not sure. Uh, and and literally tore the the sock, the dog's leg out of its socket. They rushed the dog to the hospital. Thankfully the dog survived, but ever since then, the dog hopped and never really used that back leg. The back leg was fine. They didn't have to take it off or anything, but it didn't, didn't use it anymore. And you know, they felt really bad because the the dog was in their yard, but what can you do, you know? And that was the first incident. And they're like, you know, so I'm, I don't know really whatever ended up happening. And I don't really know what triggered it. Just it was, it was wild because my mom was there in front and my mom was beating on the dog like, hey, let it go. And you know how pit bulls are, you could literally beat it. Beat it with a baseball bat and it's still, it's on something, it's on something, you know, that's how they are. When they're focused, they're focused. Unfortunately, didn't like other dogs. So then, the next time it was almost the same thing, same area. He was looking down the street. It was one apartment down from mine. Just one south, saw the dog, hopped over like a horse, ran down the street, grabbed the dog and and literally right in the middle of the dog was was going like this with the dog in its mouth and everybody screaming the, the owner screaming and I'm telling you no joke, it ripped the dog in two pieces. One piece of the dog was over there. The other piece of the dog was over there. And then the owners finally heard all the screaming. They came out and he's a big dude. He, you know, screamed at the dog. The dog went back to the house. And he brought a a plate of like a a a piece of wood and put the dog on the wood, two pieces of wood and rushed over to the hospital to try to obviously save the dog. And obviously you weren't able to save the dog. You know what I mean? And it was pretty crazy to watch that as a kid, right? And then obviously after that, they enough's enough, you know what I mean? Next time it could be a kid, who knows? And they just took him to get euthanized and it's a sad deal, you know? Because like I said, he was a sweet dog with us, with us as kids, you know, playing around with him, you know, he never bothered us. He'd like to hang out with us and no, you know, but when it came to other dogs, boy, oh, boy, some mentality is wild, wild because they weren't. And trust me, they weren't like the dog owners that were, you know, mean to the animal. They were very loving, fed him. Uh, you know, he was part of the family. He'd Christmas time, they'd put a fucking, you know, fucking Santa beard on him with a fucking Santa hat and take pictures. Like that kind of shit. He'd sleep in the house every day. You know, he'd only go outside when he, you know, he'd love being outside because he was stuck inside. He was an inside dog for the most part. You know, and most, but most Ryan, most dogs, pit bulls are. It's just a few and sometimes, you know, again, most of that you see is is the owners being bad. You know, or you know, uh, you know, sometimes you want to rescue a dog and it's been, it's been, uh, you know, just harmed mentally by the the previous owner and it doesn't get over it. You know what I mean? It doesn't trust anybody. It's skittish. Those kinds of things happen too, you know? Yep, we're lurking in the Netherlands right here. We're in Amsterdam curb. As you can see, the sun just went down eight forty seven on this beautiful Friday night. What determines if they air a high speed chase? If they're there or not, they're gonna look, they're gonna air every high speed chase that they get. You gotta realize the two things. One, they happen all the time. There's tons and tons of chases. There's probably thirty to fifty every day. That lasts, you know, forty seconds or a minute or two and they're done. Okay, maybe five minutes. If they're up, they have to fly across to wherever the chase is at. And remember, you're trying to hit a target that's possibly moving a hundred miles an hour plus away from you. Your chopper's really only doing a hundred, a hundred five knots. So you're doing about what they're doing and you're trying to catch something that's doing the same thing they're, you're doing. It's a tough catch. Constantly. Early drunks. Them's them early drunks getting stoned at twelve fifty drunk. But yeah, that's what they're doing. So if they're over the top of it, they're gonna put it up right away. Don't, don't trip. It's all about getting to it. You know, a couple of stations have two choppers while the others only have one. So there's that too. Uh, you know, and um. Wire hanger. Look, it's eighty two and shit. Um. Yeah, I just think that uh, they they've realized from the OJ chase, which was really the big first televised chase. It's a ratings sweep. It's, it just is. They love it. They love the ratings. So what's not to like, I guess, right? And people love it. So they're not gonna not show it to you. You ready for Cinco to drinko? You know, and that's the thing is, you know, you. All the chases you hear Riverside or. Imperative is impaired. No, I agree. I, you know, it is what it is. Yeah. Yes, we'll be live tonight at eight PM Pacific Standard Time for Cinco de Mayo, Cinco de Drinko, whichever you prefer. Well, Astrid, you know, you, everybody has their hobbies. If that's your hobby, feel free. If you want to stick your fucking thumb up your ass, I'm an American, you go ahead and do it. How am I as an American not gonna tell you to not stick your thumb up at your ass? Feel free. I'm not a commie. I just don't want to see it. It won't be my finger or my butthole. Your finger, your butthole, your time. Have fun. It is crazy. It actually rained pretty good for the moment here. It, you know, didn't, they said, oh, thunder, lightning, there was snow. None of that happened, of course, but it actually did rain pretty decently. I can't, I can't say it didn't. More than I really thought it would. You know? I really do wish we had more like electrical storms. It'd be so cool to have some more thunder and lightning. But you know. People cry as it is, you know? Lot of crybabies when it rains. Grabbing you up today. Well, that's good, man. That's what I want everybody to do. Smile. You know, we're living in a pretty shitty time for the last few years. Smile, have fun. You don't have enough of that. Yeah, I heard that. Tornadoes and cabbages, yeah. Is that one of those tornadoes that just rips the ceiling tiles from nineteen eighty three off? That's your three year old nephew could rip off if you let him play up on the roof. And not one car flipped over. Is that one of those or just, just checking? Do you have actual cars flipped over and stuff? That's what tornadoes do. Just go take a look at a real tornado. Billy, that ain't no real tornado. That's some wind, Billy. That's some wind. That's what they're telling you in tornado alley right now. Boy, that's some wind. It's a tiny tornado. I see, I see. That's what she said. Ah, shit, yeah, the tiny tornado. Damn, she looks good on that bike. Let's go.
Actually, you know, I want to dispute one four nine two zero Astoria Street, unit number three oh nine.
I just love talking shit, but you know, look. For real though, let's, let's be honest, you know, they always talk about these, oh man, look, 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 on their fucking TikTok, look, 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 you can see it, you can see it's. It's a barely made up funnel cloud. Yeah, I could see some trash flying around in the air. I could see it's, oh, you know, funnel shaped and trash. Get it? Meanwhile, it's knocking the tents over and you know, the stuff that's not tied down, that's. Couple hundred pounds or less. But anything that's thousands of pounds like a car. Doing just fine. Now I need you to go look at a, what a tornado does F three or bigger. Go tell me what, what it looks like after. Tell me what the aftermath looks like. You, you see a car in a tree and that car. Is in a tree. That flew six blocks. A car flew six blocks from your driveway. Six blocks over and landed in a tree. That is a tornado. Nothing is left in the path of a tornado. Nothing, but just literally sheer destruction. Two OD's, this one at Target. Who's ODing at Target? Starbucks? Ben, I would go. Ben, I would go storm chasing. Why not? I would definitely do it. I think it's a cool thing to do. If you ask me. It's what's not to like. I, I've never seen a tornado up close. I would like to go with someone who's like a seasoned person though. Not just some dude. Been doing it two years or something. No, no, no. Someone who understands the storm and we can be close to it, but not be in so much jeopardy. I think it'd be really dope. I mean, I'm telling you, I. I remember when we were in New Mexico and. And it did, it just started coming down like this really sick fucking, the coolest electrical storm. And I just remember as a, you know, just sitting there, you know, looking through the front of the bus for, I don't know, thirty, forty minutes, like a little kid. You know, watching all the lightning. Here in the thunder, watching all the lightning was fun. Cause I'm telling you, man, Southern California, you don't see that whole lot. You know, in certain areas, maybe the OC, they'll get definitely more lightning and, and thunder. You know, because you gotta remember, most of that is pretty close to the beach. So you have all that weather coming off the water rule, you know, uninterrupted, you know? As to where in like in LA, it's, you know, make, it has to make its way, you know, twenty, thirty minute drive time inland. And that's just in like Hollywood area, you know what I mean? Where I'm at, it's gotta make it over the mountain range. That's what I'm saying. It's, I'm, I'm, and I'm like in a bowl, so. Yeah, I mean, uh, it'd just be nice to see and hear more of it, dude. I know the, the, the cats and dogs don't like it, but, uh, tip for that is you can get the treats, the treats from Chewy. They make calming treats for both cats and dogs. For Fourth of July and New Year's mainly. You know, people, the fireworks, the gunshots. So you give them that, they calm themselves and don't go as cuckoo. For the day or scared really. They're really going scared, not crazy, but, uh. Yeah. It's really the way it works, man. So it also works for, um, that too. Robbing the phone store? Sounds about right. Go get him some new phones, baby. They love those phones, especially new inbox. Holy shit. It's probably five hundred bucks a box, five hundred bucks a piece for those things. Brand new thirteen hundred dollar fucking iPhone. Right? In the new iPhone, like the new top of the line iPhone. What is that? Out the door with tax. It's thirteen, maybe even fourteen, right? And in that, in that neighborhood? I'm gonna say it's right in there, thirteen, fourteen for the top of the line iPhone. Best you can buy. You know, probably one terabyte. iPhone fourteen max, whatever the fuck they're on right now, nineteen, whatever they're at. What's up Jorge? Hot boy, yeah, I got kids. He's right there. Did you see him? Sitting on the camera right there. He's lazy as shit. He won't get a job. Won't do nothing. He sleeps all day, plays video games with his friends. Eats. He eats me out of house and home. Hell yeah, he's got a sword.
Looks like a medieval warrior.
Got the fucking. Sword, baby. The sword of a thousand truths. He mustn't even speak of it, but he's got it. And he does look like a medieval warrior for anybody's cares. I guess I'm outta here, man. Are those the Hollywood riders protesting? They should stay on strike because their fucking work sucks dick. I mean, I'm always telling you guys how unoriginal you motherfuckers are. We don't need another fucking remake. Of, you know, trading places or whatever the fuck you come up with tomorrow. We don't need that. We don't need it. Stay the fuck on strike, you unoriginal motherfuckers. Hopefully, you know, you'll get some unemployment. Hopefully you don't. Maybe you'll become original and start writing. And I gotta say. You know, after knowing that the number one movie in America is an animated version of a fifty-year-old character. Called Mario. You know, Super Mario Brothers is the best. Why is he walking backwards? So yeah, man, just craziness. Alright, I'm outta here. I'll see you guys tonight, eight PM Pacific Standard Time. On Smokey Scan. Tonight. So until then, have a fantastic Friday. Stay safe. Cause remember it is. A full moon. And it is crazy. It's Friday. So be good. Up, up, up. It almost went down. Almost missed it right away. Hold on, I'm gonna make sure they get through the light. Holy shit. There we go. Alright guys, have a fantastic one. I'll see you guys in a few hours.
Thank you for your cooperation. Good night.